Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Council Meeting and I want to thank all of you for being here this evening. We'll go ahead and honor our nation right now, the United States of America. Would ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We'll move now to the invocation. I would like to call on my brother with the same haircut from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. You would please come up and deliver the invocation for us. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Chris Bingham. I've been a proud resident of Apex for eighteen years and professor in Chapel Hill and delighted to be here this evening. Up until about the 1950s, almost every orchestra in the world was all male and the prevailing wisdom at the time was, well, I guess men are just better. Until the Boston Symphony tried to test this ridiculous hypothesis and what they did is they created a blind screening. They put up a big curtain and they asked people to try out behind the curtain in an attempt to get more women. Well, you know what happened? They still selected all males. Seriously. Till finally someone, an outsider, said, hey folks, I'm not sure if you realize this, but we can actually hear the high heels of the women walking behind the curtain. So they asked everyone to take their shoes off before trying out and then women skyrocketed. All of us have biases and blind spots. I don't care who you are. We all have them, biases and blind spots. You do not know what you do not know. Those are called unknown unknowns. The beauty of a council is we come together not to figure out who is right, but what is right. We bring our individual perspectives and unique insights to figure out how to move forward. And so I'm grateful that inspiration is scattered among us and we have the chance to come and counsel together. So with that, let me begin with prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to gather here as proud residents of this wonderful place we call Apex. We're thankful for the chance to raise our families here and to learn here and to grow together. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have in this wonderful nation to have freedom of speech, to share our unique perspectives. And we pray that we will be peacemakers, that in this world with turmoil and trouble and vitriol and anger, that we will be a voice for peace. That we will be able to counsel together and put aside our, put aside our unique biases and try to understand what will allow for the peace of our people. We're grateful for our leaders who are giving of their time and energy to try to make our community better and stronger. And we're grateful for the chance that we have to be a part of this process. We pray for them and we pray that we all be able to lift and help in our own unique way in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate you making your flight to get back in time from Cambodia. So thank you so much for your sacrifice. All right. We'll move now to the consent agenda. You have consent agenda in front of you. We do have some noted changes. Removal of Consent, item number seven, Resolution Delegating Authority to Negotiate Award. Approve and execute contracts and other instruments, which is a staff request. And then we have clarification on consent for, if I can get manager to clarify that, the transparency for the financial piece and where would the money come from?
Yes, sir. I believe the question's related to the position we're asking the FTE to be created. This position will be a project manager. It'll be leading a lot of the projects that are in the big branch, the basin. So North Carolina Children's. It's consistent with the agreement that we've made with North Carolina Children's to have some dedicated resources to their project. But there'll be other projects as well that are in the basin. So the primary funding source in the beginning will be the Water and Sewer Fund as most of those projects will be infrastructure related. As that, as projects change in that position, we may look at diversifying the funding depending on the nature of the project. But right now, the majority, all, would be from Water and Sewer Funding guys.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right. With that, are there any other changes or, oops. All right. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. Motion carries. Back to you. Updates, Town Manager.
All right. It's happening quick. So I do have a pretty lengthy update and we have some recognition pieces. I think I'll start with some of the update items and then we'll end with the recognitions because that'll go into the proclamations. I'll start with talking about some of our events and festivals. We had a fantastic event, community event this past weekend, the Fest Italiana. That was here on Town Hall Campus. I know several of you attended. That was a great event and look forward to hosting that for many years to come. Coming up this week, we've got the Explore Some Ours, which is this Thursday at the Apex Nature Park Amphitheater. That's from six to seven thirty. We've got this weekend, on Saturday, the Latino Arts Festival. That will be from three to nine PM. Excuse me. We've got the Apex Night Out, which will be featuring the Touch a Truck. That'll be October seventh. And that is here on Town Hall Campus. That's four thirty to seven PM. We have the Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday, October thirteenth. That'll be in the Apex Nature Park as well and that is from six PM to seven thirty. Two more here. The Love Local Showcase. That'll be on Sunday, October fifth and that's from eleven AM to four PM. And that is downtown, non-downtown businesses will team up to showcase what they offer. They'll be featuring samples, swag, and special promotions. So exciting there to support local businesses. And then the last event that I have mentioned is the Apex Oktoberfest, which will be coming up on October eleventh. That will also be here on Town Campus and that will be from twelve to seven PM again on October eleventh. So that wraps up our events. Next, I'll head into an Olive Chapel Road update. I heard from the District Engineer today and they have made great progress. All the rights of entry have been obtained for that project. So they are so far on schedule. We'll see that completed as they've put out publicly. So I'm not sharing anything that's a secret. The reopening by the end of January. So right now they are on track for that based on their progress to this point and the contract process. Next, I'll head into the utility billing. We talked about doing this monthly, but in between, I still want to give you some information that we have. So the next update will probably be more robust at the following meeting, but I do have some information and a couple charts and graphs as examples that I can pass out to council. So I'm going to pass this one down for you. Are they all the same? Yes, those are all the same. That's a set. And then here is a second graph. So we've had a lot going on. I'll mention a couple of things that happened towards the end of last week, beginning of this week. As mentioned, the Barry Dunn Report that I did send to council last week, we did put that up on our website. It is paired with the staff response, which typically accompanies an audit type document. So those are both on our website. We also did a third-party review video. That was released, I want to say, yesterday. So you can follow that on our YouTube channel. It was also posted on Facebook. We've updated our FAQs that are on the website. There's a lot of good information there. Part of our challenge is we're putting a lot of information out, but people aren't necessarily consuming it. So we're trying different ways to get that out. But the FAQs on our website are a great resource of information. So check those out. The two charts that I passed, hopefully everybody has those now.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll start to put some of this public facing. These are just hot off the presses, so I wanted to share some of the charts with you. The first one, which is, if you look at the pie chart. So our process right now, if you're familiar, we have Ask Apex. That's kind of the front lines that people can call in. It's our customer service. It's our 3-1-1. But it's Ask Apex and they are handling about eighty percent of the calls are resolved in their shop. Right? It varies seventy-nine to eighty-one, but we're averaging about eighty percent of calls being resolved in Ask Apex. So that leaves about twenty percent that they can't resolve at that level and have to be kicked to kind of the next phase, which is more in-depth review. And I'm speaking specifically to utility billing issues on this now. So those twenty percent there go on a call log. That call log then has been categorized. We've been able to put them. So there are questions related to solar. There are questions for meter replacements. There are definitely billing questions, payment questions. So there are about six different categories and then there are some catchalls within that. So that twenty percent feeds to the call log, which then staff from Billing and Collections are the primary staff members that are looking at that and addressing it. But they're, they're taking those. We are about twenty-five percent through that call log. Right? So I'll hit that again. Eighty percent of the calls are handled at the Ask Apex level. Twenty percent are then feeding to a log of customers. And we are about twenty-five percent through that log and addressing those. So people have been waiting for several weeks on that log. I believe you will see that twenty-five percent start to climb significantly. As we've talked about the resources in place and the training, as the staff have come on board and have been more familiar with a lot of the systems that we've transitioned to, you'll see that twenty-five percent kind of go up. We've also mentioning the categories. Each category now has what I'm calling a champion assigned to each one. So solar, for an example, there's one staff member that is driving to get the, the number of callers on the log reduced down to zero is the goal. But even solar, you look at it, there are so many issues within solar. So it's not like we can come in and there's one issue that we need to address. It's multiple issues depending on your experience with solar. So we expect some additional communication to go out specifically, I'm speaking on solar, in the coming week or so. But there's a champion assigned to each one of those categories.
That's a quick question while you're doing that. When you say twenty-five percent, what is that number?
The, the call log total, I've got that here. Let me grab that real quick so I'm not misquoting it. So the number of issues remaining on that log would be four hundred and thirty-eight. So we had five hundred and eighty-seven, one hundred and forty-nine of those resolved with four hundred and thirty-eight. So it's roughly percentage resolved is twenty-five point four percent of those. So as we've looked at the log and categorized it, there are some, some big picture fixes that are easy. Like we can knock out fifty people with one adjustment. But a lot of what's left, it's a lot of different items and that's what this pie chart demonstrates as well, the different categories of calls. So we've got questions related to bill review. That's our largest. There's a service period questions. You've got nine percent there. Final and initial adjustments needed. So that's when someone would activate service or discontinue service. That's the final and initial adjustments. Solar, you can see is thirteen percent. Missing payment, there's a nine percent in that category. Meter check and test, that's nine percent and that's a combination of we may go out and do another read on a meter or it may involve actually going out and taking the meter out and taking it back and doing a test. And I can talk in a second about what that involves because that's a lengthier process that does, it's pretty resource intense. So when you look at that, it's nine percent on the pie chart, but I'll go ahead and talk about it now. If someone says that they want to get a meter test done, that involves staff going out. We actually have to remove the meter, put in a temporary meter so that they're not interrupted with service. We take that meter then back to the respective shop. So if it's electric, we're testing it there. If it's water, we're testing it there. Then when they test back, we're, we're going back and reinstalling those meters, in most cases, because those meters then come with the history of the billing. So those meters then go back. So it's not a quick twenty-minute thing. So even though it's only nine percent on the pie chart, it's a pretty lengthy process and staff intensive from a resource perspective. And, and as an example, when I'm talking about our call log, we have, I'll speak of one individual, not by name, but they were on that call log and had questions related to their bill. So we did a full analysis of their bill, had several emails back and forth, shared that analysis with them. They came back, asked some additional questions. We then answered those questions, worked with them. And then at the end of all that analysis, which, I don't want to minimize that, there were several staff members involved in that analysis. They then said, okay, well now I would like a meter test. So after all the hours of analysis, then we went into the meter test phase. We have to schedule those. So it was a couple of weeks to get it scheduled and then going out and actually doing the process that I just mentioned. So that's an example of, of one individual that could be on our call log, the amount of resources that we're putting into going through and getting them comfortable with that analysis. They may ultimately not be comfortable with that, but our goal is to spend the quality time on each customer to go through the analysis and then if needed, do a meter read or a meter test in the end. But that's an example of one individual on our call log.
Do you have an estimate of how much time, or just as an example, that individual might have taken?
I, I know in the analysis, and Sean was involved heavily in that analysis, any thoughts on the amount of time we spent? There were, there were at least five staff members working on that analysis.
That one?
Yeah.
It's hard to say, but. Several hours.
Yeah. So some of them are easier and it's, hey, can you pull up my bill and just talk through and look at my history? And we can handle a lot of those quicker, but some of them are very involved. So it just, it ranges. But that one, I, I know I was on emails and I saw at least from meter test and from analysis and review, no less than eight staff members were involved in that process. So that's the, the one chart. Wanted to give you just an idea of what the questions we're looking at. The other is a graph that we produced that relates to the length of, the length of service periods, right? And you'll see the, the graph, there are a couple anomalies where it spikes up. That was based on the issue we identified where the printed service period was incorrect. The actual service period is mapped when you look at the green dotted and the yellow dotted. So they were much more normalized in the period that the actual experience and the, the bill was based on. And on the left-hand side, we've put what the cycle lengths have been for cycle one and cycle two, going back to March. You can see where it's highlighted. Those were the cycle lengths that were different from what was printed on the bill. And we, we're going to continue to track this, but this was one of our big goals, was to get to a normalized length of service for, for the reporting period. So there's some information there. And like I said, we're still gathering data and we'll continue to produce these so that you can have oversight and monitor the length of billing service there. Some other indicators that we're looking at, and like I said, some of this is, is stuff we're just developing now. So I'll share it a little bit more at our next meeting when we give that update. When we run a billing cycle, there's something called a variance report and it's, we, it's a set of, I won't get super technical. Sean, if, if I need to get more technical, jump in. But a variance report basically says if there, we identify through different, I'll call it computer code, we'll put in different thing, parameters. And if something goes outside of those parameters, it populates it onto a variance report. So anything that kind of is out of the norm. Some examples of that would be your electric bill is higher than we anticipated. So maybe something, you, you were at five hundred dollars and now it's ten thousand dollars, right? That would then kick to a variance report. The same would be true of an extra low electric report or electric reading. And there are reasons and I'll get into that in a second. So you could have high electric, low electric, high water usage, low water usage. And then there are a couple of other categories that would push it onto a variance report. So the example for our cycle two, which we just completed, there are meter counts and this counts electric and water meters. There was a meter count of around forty-one, almost forty-two thousand. a meter count of around 41, almost 42,000 meters in that meter count. The variance that initially kicked to that report was around 6,000 variances, okay? So face value, that's, ooh, that's a lot, right? That's a 15, almost, it's a 14.2% that would push to that variance report. When you dive into that report, there's a couple of things that are worth noting. The first is the largest category, over 5,000 of those, were because the electric reported too low, right? So why is that? Why would it report too low? Well, if you look at what we're in the changing of seasons right now, we would expect electric usage to go down as people are using their air conditioning less, as an example. And so most of those are because, and we have to go in now, and we're verifying why they went low, but most of those, we can chalk up to the fact that because people are using less electric as we cool off, right? That it'll start to go back up. But that's the majority. And when you look at how many of those variances were to the low, which would be to the customer's favor, instead of looking at a potential overbill if it was showing up as a high variance, 90.2% of the variances were to the low. So we're looking at about a 10% that would be potentially higher for the customer. So this is important to us as we get this data, because then, while we don't want to be low or high, we'd rather be right where it's supposed to be, we can then key in on those that would potentially, that 10%, to look at how they would negatively impact the customer. So that informs us as to where we need to focus our efforts and say, okay, let's focus on those that might harm the customer because they're higher than they would expect. And then we will go into the lower, and it drives us into the different categories. But it also prioritizes. So if electric was high, we had 86 that showed up. Like I said, over 5,000 showed up as under what you would expect based on our parameters for electric. Threw a lot out there? Any questions on that before I move on to the next?
I appreciate the details and explanation, so thank you very much.
And it is, it is very complicated. There's a whole lot more. And like I said, we're developing a lot more data points. But one of the beauties of technology is now that you have a lot more data, it creates a lot more data to look at, too. So...
Variance, Randy, can you say that the non-seasonal change variances are going down over time from maybe a peak in summertime?
I don't, I can't say that yet. Someone else may be able to comment on that. I don't know, Sean, you have any thoughts on that?
Right now, Mr. Yen, I don't know that we have enough data points in there. We have to see a trend. And, you know, we're talking about really just getting, this is one cycle into, you know, a transition in season. So that was actually a little cooler in September than normal. So it's hard to establish a trend out at this point. But we've started that data. We'll continue to look at that and evaluate that. And that, again, seasonal's part of it. It's not necessarily all of it, but it's part, it's definitely part of it in terms of when we look at, sort of evaluating those accounts.
With regard to the, I'm sorry, with regard to the variance report, you don't have to do that today, but I do think it would be important for us to get a sense as to what's actually our levels that are triggering the variances. What's the percentage deviation? That way, we can get a little bit more of a sense as to whether or not these variations are ultimately identifying trends.
We can definitely supply that. I have, it's, there are probably multiple.
Right.
I'm assuming we would be more conservative on that, to kick something into a variance. And as we learn more about the new systems, and then we'll start to tailor those items that would kick into a variance.
So the parameters to define a variance, is that us? Is it someone wrote some program? Is it a vendor? Like, where does that actually come from?
We can set the parameters. So the vendor sets, in discussion with Millsaw, with our vendor, we can set the parameters. I'll have to get the exact ones in terms of what was being set up as they were going through with billing. But there is a range, like, as was mentioned. So when we look at it, we have, you can compare to last month, you can compare to the average of the past three months, you can compare to last year at the same time. So there's different ones that kind of pop up to try and, try and flag potential, where those differences are. Sometimes those don't align up, though, either, right? I mean, you can have different things for this. But that's, again, that's why we look at it. But you could have all three of those out there, and then if one triggers, then it's on there. So there's quite a few to look through, and some don't actually indicate anything. As mentioned, you know, it's a seasonal change. There's not really anything there. Some may say, hey, there was a leak on this water, right? And then we have to go look. And that's why we look at the variance report and try and catch those things.
Yeah. And it strikes me as something that could be really, really useful. But it's unfortunate, like, if it's just cold that month, and our variance report is full of people who are, you know, showing up with a variance. I guess it occurs to me that the best factor to look at wouldn't be like a house versus historical usage, but like a house versus its neighbors that month, and it's dealt with from the previous month. Like, if they went up or down more than their neighbor did, might indicate a variance more topical, but...
So, and I think what you're suggesting is an example of a higher-level analysis. And we're not, we're not there yet on something like that, but I think it's something we can look at developing when we get there.
I got, I got one last one. So you talked about, like, the analysis, then meter tests. Are we tracking, like, the customers that they go through all of that, and then at the end, when they reconcile, they say, it's still, I don't think it's right? Are we tracking? Because some people say, aha, it makes sense. But then there's a lot that they don't. Are we tracking?
Right. I can think of one individual in particular that we did, we went through all that process, and they still were not happy with the results. So I'm aware of that one. I don't know that, do you have any idea of what we have?
So notes for every single thing that happens, whether it's a meter change, meter test, recheck, every single one of those notes are documented in our system. So we don't necessarily have a report that says where we track that, but that data is there. If we needed to go back to a specific person, specific account, and look and see what has happened, we can look at that history and identify where that was. So...
Then I have just two more minor data points that I wanted to mention, because I do have them. We're tracking SEW is our vendor that helps with portal customer support, so the utility portal. And we do have several data points there. Of note, I'll tell you that the number of calls, I don't have the September data obviously yet, but July to August, we did see a reduction in the number of calls that were going to that system, which kind of makes sense. As we've set up the portal, there was a larger rush in the beginning for people to register there. A lot of those calls were looking for account numbers and some to make payments. But we have seen a decrease there. We look at their wait times, too. We're monitoring that to make sure it's in line. They are looking right now, average talk time is between 2 minutes 50 seconds and 2 minutes 57 seconds. The average wait time is 42 seconds in July, 32 seconds in August. So not a large wait time, once you get to that customer service, and the calls haven't been great. But those numbers are decreasing, as well as the calls that have been abandoned. So people that get transferred to that portal customer service, we do have some that get tired, hang up. The wait time for them, they typically are waiting about two and a half minutes before they're abandoning the call. But it's a small percentage. Most people are staying on the line and getting the assistance from SEW. So we're monitoring that. We have extended the contract with SEW to provide some additional customer service support until we feel good at where we are on that, and then we'll pull back from that additional support. And then the last data point I want to share deals with missed reads on meters. That as we replace meters, there's the potential it takes, there's a little lag time for that meter to actually, I'll simplify this, they're probably going to cringe when I do it, but before that meter wakes up, activates, and's fully communicating with our system. So we've been monitoring that. The latest data that I have speaks to September, looking at both cycles. And we had less, it looks like about close to a half a percent for a missed read. And then once those are identified, we have to go back out and collect those reads. So we're doing pretty good. And that's out of, like, Cycle 2, it's the, almost the 42,000 meters that we're looking at. It's a 0.53% for the missed reads. Cycle 1 is about a 0.3% on that. So we have a very low missed reads number for all of our cycles.
What does that look like for the customer? Because I've seen some people who would say, I got this bill for June or whatever, and it said I use zero gallons. Is that a missed read?
That, that could be a missed read. And again, a lot of it, so many nuances. If we pulled that, that would have been considered a missed read, but it could have been when the billing was pulled. We had just replaced the meter, and so it hadn't fully awakened and come to the system. So that potentially would be a missed read. We try to get those resolved before the billing, but just depending on where they fall and how our billing cycle goes, that's potentially what happened there. But that would be a missed read if we have no data showing for it. Okay. So again, a lot of information. We're going to start to make more of this available publicly, but we're still wading through it, collecting and analyzing, and trying to come up, because there are so many data points, trying to come up with numbers that really make sense and can describe the situation that we're experiencing. Okay, good?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Now to, now to the fun stuff, right? We'll do some recognitions, if you don't mind. And I would like to ask, you ought to come down so that we can do We have four items that I would like to bring to your attention. And they'll be surprised at the order, because I didn't tell them ahead of time when they were going to come up. So I'm going to start with budget. If I could ask our budget staff that's present to come on up. As they're walking up, as you know, we've had some transformation in our budget department. We've had a lot of change, both with our process and some staff changes. But I am proud to announce that GFOA gave our budget department the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal Year 26 Budget. This recognition is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and reflects a remarkable level of service. On top of that, we earned special recognition for our capital program and our strategic goals and strategies. So I wanted to give a round of applause and recognize our budget staff. I also don't want to miss this opportunity to introduce to you our new budget director, Jessica. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be able to serve the community in this capacity. With me tonight, I have my awesome team, who really is the people who got us through this budget season this year. Without them, none of it is possible. So we have Noah Johnson. He is our budget analyst. He handles all of our utilities. We have Ryan Othout, and he is our intern extraordinary. He is an MPA candidate at UNC. And then we have Mariah Mahashwaran, and she is our analyst over public works, planning, all of the development and operations for the general fund side. So, thank you guys.
We don't have the awards for the pictures. They're going to send them to us, but I figure we can at least get a picture with, with staff and council in there. Don't go too far. We're going to do a picture.
Oh, full group?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next, I'm going to go to Parks and Recreation. Who's going to represent? I know, I saw Craig here. Here's Craig. Craig and any staff that would like to come up, I'm going to talk on this. Apex Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources has been selected as the recipient of the USTA North Carolina 2025 Outstanding Parks and Recreation Department Award. This honor recognizes Parks and Recreation's incredible contributions to tennis in North Carolina. The award ceremony is going to be held this Saturday in Greensboro, I believe, and hopefully we'll have a representative there. So congratulations to our Parks Recreation Department. Want to say anything? I appreciate it.
You can't even picture yourself, right?
I didn't think I would be able to.
Surprise.
All right, scoot in just a little bit more. There we go. All right. Next, I'm going to Water Resources. So I think I saw Hannah here. Hannah, and I think Jessica. I don't know if anyone else is coming up, but if you would, make your way up front. So Spring 2025 Flood Resiliency Grant Award. We are the recipients of this grant. This will be for the Beaver Creek Nature Park Stream and Flood Plane Restoration. So I want to congratulate Hannah, who submitted the grant application. This, the amount, ready? And there's no match required. I want to get this right. $1.4 million with no match. Say anything? No? All right. Walk the line. They don't want to speak.
Right on back in the middle.
Come on back for the picture.
You want to get one on each side, or?
Yeah.
All right. Next one I got is for electric. And we got a lot to say about electric. So if you guys want to start, coming up this way. We got a lot of awards. I'm going to run over there and get them. And then we got a proclamation we'll do after that. Let me grab the plaque. I am extremely proud to be in front of you to recognize our electric department, which just awesome with their service. And this, this shows it. So this one plaque represents four awards on this one plaque. So this comes from Electric Cities. It's the Public Power Award of Excellence, and it speaks to the tenants of the Electric City Strategic Plan. And we won the Award of Excellence for four areas of their strategic plan. It's future-focused, strengthening public power, provide superior power, and people, which is who you have right here before you. So congratulations on this award. All right. I'm not done there. The next award is from the American Public Power Association, Certificate of Excellence and Reliability, which is something Apex is definitely known for with our electric service. So congratulations. And the last one does speak to how we value our people and our team members. This is the Municipal Electric, this is from Electric Cities as well, the Municipal Electric Safety Award for No-Lost Workday Cases. So taking care of our people and making sure that they're safe. So congratulations for that. Did I miss anything? Want to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say incredibly proud I am of our team. It takes a tremendous amount of effort to keep the lights on in Apex. I think we all know that. And appreciate everybody's support on, on keeping, keeping the lights on. We've been keeping the lights on in Apex, lighting the peak for over 100 years. I hope it goes for another 100. I appreciate everything everybody does. Thank you again.
Let me get these over here. Oh, yeah. We're going to, we're going to do this picture. I forgot. We've also got the proclamation, so don't go far. Do you want to do the pictures? Want to do the proclamation next?
Sure.
Okay. Well, go ahead. So step, right over here real quick. We'll have council do the proclamation, and then we'll line you up with pictures again.
Thank you, sir. All right. Proclamation, Public Power Week 2025. And we're going to read this together. So we'll start out with Councilman Ziegler.
All right. Proclamation, Public Power Week 2025. Whereas the town of Apex is proud to have been a supplier of public power since 1917, making this year its 109th year of service, and is grateful to its nearly 50 electric utilities team members who make this endeavor possible. And?
Whereas Apex is a part of Electric Cities, an organization of over 90 public power agencies in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia, that focus on delivering reliable public power at a reduced cost to residents. And?
Whereas the safety, efficiency, and reliability of the power supply is paramount, and town staff does an excellent job at ensuring our system is one of the best in the region. And?
Whereas the town of Apex Electric Utilities Department serves over 30,000 customers with a reliability rating of 99.99%. And?
Whereas this excellence in public power has been widely recognized, numerous awards including the Reliability Award, the Electric City Safety Award, and the Electric City's Public Power Award of Excellence in the areas of future-focused, strengthen public power, provide superior power, and people. provide superior power, and people.
Now therefore, I, Jacques K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through October 11th, 2025, Public Power Week in the town of Apex, and commend all the members of Team Apex that helped make this incredible work a reality. Signed this 23rd day of September. Thank y'all so much. Thank you.
All right, we're getting the pictures and hold all of your... Someone take one.
Action POW MIA Day of Honor. And kicking us off on that is Mayor Pro Tim Ed Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. And proclamation for prisoners of war, missing in action, Apex Day of Honor 2025. Whereas millions of Americans have heeded the call to serve and protect our country throughout its history for threats which jeopardize the freedoms we hold dear and that all people should enjoy. And?
Whereas through numerous conflicts, many paid the ultimate sacrifice in their service to our country, but some became prisoners of war, POW, or went missing in action, MIA, making it extremely difficult for families to receive closure or say one final goodbye. And?
Whereas according to the Defense Logics Agency, more than 83,000 American service members remain classified as POW or MIA, and efforts remain strong to find or account for them and help grieving families begin to heal. And?
Whereas, as Americans, we hold a solemn responsibility to recognize the sacrifices that have been made for our freedom and show our support to those who are doing the indispensable work of searching for answers. And?
Whereas the town of Apex stands firm in its gratitude for all of the brave Americans who have served and are currently serving our country, and our condolences to all families still desperately hoping for answers.
Now therefore, I, Jacques K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Friday, September 26th, 2025, prisoners of war, missing in action, Apex Day of Honor in the town of Apex, and urge residents to acknowledge this day with reverence and respect and never forget the price of freedom. Receiving the proclamation tonight is Commander Lee Harris, Mike Sayers, Phil Princey, Barry Block, Dennis Schmidt, and Jim Speedle. So please come up. I would also like to call up Sandra Edens, if you would, please come up. Thank you. From American Legion Post 124, come on up.
Councilmembers and the city of Apex for everything you've done for us as veterans. We appreciate the work, the patriotism, and the support we've gotten from the entire town for as long as we've been here. I wanted to let you know that every one of our meetings, we have a special POW MIA ceremony. We have a chair set there that it's a physical symbol of the many American POWs and MIA's that are still unaccounted for from all the wars that the United States of America has been involved in. This is a reminder to all of us to spare no effort to secure the release of any American prisoners and to look for the repatriation of any of the remains of our lost fellow brother soldiers, sailors, Air Force, whatever. We want to make sure that we all rededicate ourselves consistently and regularly to this vital endeavor to get our people and get them home and get our families recognized and get them to say that final goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander. All right, we'll move now to proclamation Fire Prevention Week, which is Sunday, October 5th through Saturday, October 11th. We have Sparky. Is that right, Chief Herman? Sparky is here. Sparky has made an arrival. All right, Sparky, come on in. So before I read the proclamation, you guys want to do a presentation first, or do you want the proclamation? Okay, all right, so we'll go ahead with the proclamation. Councilmember Mahaffey.
Thank you, Mayor. It's Fire Prevention Week 2025. Whereas the town of Apex Fire Department works tirelessly to spread fire prevention education, inspect buildings for safety concerns, and respond to fires in order to help keep us all safe. And?
Whereas the increased use of lithium ion batteries in many common household items, particularly electronics, present new and unique fire risks as they are at risk of overheating, starting a fire, or even exploding. And?
Whereas, over a recent five-year period, the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission has documented at least 25,000 incidents of overheating or fire related to lithium ion batteries, highlighting the need for safety education and vigilance. And?
Whereas residents should follow these calls to action to help to keep themselves and their families safe. Buy only listed and safety-certified products. Prevent overcharging of lithium ion batteries. Taking care of equipment to prevent potential damage. And recycling lithium ion batteries properly to help protect the whole community. And?
Whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge into Fire Safety: Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home," serves as a reminder of the importance of using, charging, caring for, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities.
Now therefore, I, Jacques K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through October 11th, 2025, Fire Prevention Week in the town of Apex, and urge residents to help educate their families and communities on these measures they can take to help keep everyone safe. So, calling up now is Sparky, the mascot for the Fire Department, and Community Risk Reduction Coordinator, Courtney Butler, and of course, Chief Tim Herman, and many fire officials from the town of Apex. So please come up.
I'm Courtney Butler. I'm the Community Risk Reduction Coordinator for the Apex Fire Department, and every year we celebrate Fire Prevention Week. And this year, it is all about lithium ion batteries and how you can stay safe in your home. So thank you for indulging us today. I'd just like to take a few minutes to talk about lithium ion battery safety. These batteries power so many devices in our home. On average, you probably have about 15 to 40 items that have lithium ion batteries in them. So they're efficient, but when they're damaged, overcharged, or used improperly, they can pose a pretty significant risk. So across the country, fire departments are seeing a growing number of incidents caused by lithium ion batteries. The U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission has documented at least 25,000 incidents of overheating related to these fires. And in New York City alone, there have been more than 800 lithium ion battery fires since 2022, resulting in 30 deaths and over 400 injuries. Waste and recycling facilities nationwide have also reported hundreds of fires traced back to discarded batteries. Here in Apex, we've been very fortunate. We have not yet experienced a fire from lithium ion batteries, but that's exactly why we must stay vigilant and teach our friends and neighbors the risk of what they can actually do. And prevention and education are our best safety tools. So what you learn, if you'll indulge me in this little video of a couple of safety tips, and please take it back to your family, your friends, your neighbors, spread the word, and we will have a nice and safe Apex. Thank you.
Join NFPA and fire departments across North America for Fire Prevention Week 2025. Charge into fire safety. Lithium ion batteries in your home. Most of the electronics we use every day, like phones, tablets, cordless vacuums, and power tools, are powered by lithium ion batteries. In fact, almost everything that's rechargeable uses them. The problem is, if these batteries are overcharged or damaged, they can overheat, catch fire, or even explode. Here's how you can stay safe. Buy only listed products. Look for a safety certification mark from a nationally recognized testing lab on the packaging or the product. Only use the charger that came with your device, or a charger approved by the manufacturer. Charge on a hard surface, never on your bed, couch, or under a pillow. And don't overcharge. Once it's at 100%, unplug it. When it's time to get rid of used batteries, don't throw them in the trash or regular recycling bins. They could start a fire. Instead, recycle them responsibly. Visit caltorecycle.org to find a battery drop-off location near you. You can help make your home, your community, and the planet safer by recycling batteries the right way. Let's charge into fire safety together. For more fire safety tips, visit fpw.org.
All right, the next proclamation we have is Hindu Heritage Month 2025. Councilwoman Killingsworth.
Hindu Heritage Month 2025. Whereas Hinduism is one of the world's oldest living traditions and its third-largest religion, which has had widespread impact, positive impacts on individuals and communities through its positive messages and practices. And?
Whereas the timeless teachings of Hinduism rooted in the principles of Dharma, Ashina, and Seva, please, I apologize, meaning righteousness, nonviolence, and self-service, have inspired generations and continue to provide guidance for individuals seeking peace, harmony, and purpose. And?
Whereas Hindu philosophy was introduced to the world at the Parliament of the World's Religions in 1893, highlighting Hinduism's universal vision of unity and diversity. And?
Whereas Diwali, the festival of lights, observed this year in October by Hindus, Jains, Sikhs, and Buddhists worldwide, symbolizes the triumph of light over darkness, knowledge over ignorance, and good over evil, while also serving as a time of reflection, Thanksgiving, and renewal. And?
Whereas during the month of October, Hindu communities across the country in Apex celebrate their culture, faith, and diverse spiritual traditions rooted in India's civilizational history, and the town is proud to join in this observance.
Now therefore, I, Jacques K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025, Hindu Heritage Month in the town of Apex, and further proclaim Monday, October 20th, 2025, Diwali, and encourage residents to join in recognizing and celebrating the rich cultural heritage, values, and contributions of Hindu-Americans here in Apex. I would like to call up Prashat Agarwal and his group to receive the proclamation.
Thank you. On behalf of the Hindu community of Apex, I would like to say thank you very much for this proclamation. This is a truly true gesture of inclusiveness, and we are very thankful, and we take great pride in being part of this rich fabric of this town. We are committed to partnering with Apex and leave a positive impact through cultural exchange and community engagement in our service. All of us can work together to make a better Apex, a brighter Apex, which shines through unity, diversity, and shared values. Thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, sir, council members, and Apex residents. On behalf of the Hindu community of Apex, I would like to say thank you very much for this proclamation. This is a truly true gesture of inclusiveness, and we are very thankful and we take great pride in being part of this rich fabric of this town. We are committed to partnering with Apex and leave a positive impact through cultural exchange and community engagement and our service. All of us can work together to make a better Apex, a brighter Apex, which shines through unity, diversity, and shared values. Thank you very much for this honor.
All right, final proclamation tonight is Indigenous Peoples' Day 2025, which is Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Councilman Gant.
Whereas the town of Apex acknowledges that it sits on land originally occupied by native communities and tribal nations, and we seek to honor those groups by acknowledging their deep heritage, traditions, and invaluable contributions to our community, and?
Whereas indigenous peoples are known for their strength, resilience, and fortitude, even through the immense cruelty and injustice towards their communities that has plagued our nation's and world's history, and?
Whereas in nineteen seventy-seven, at a United Nations conference, Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed as an international day of solidarity with the indigenous peoples of America, and?
Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day offers an opportunity to reflect on the history of mistreatment to indigenous communities and reminds us of the need for efforts to seek reconciliation and healing, and?
Whereas the town of Apex is grateful for our indigenous communities and encourages and encourage efforts that seek to quell discrimination and unify people to make more, make a more diverse and stronger community.
Now therefore, I, Jacques K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Indigenous Peoples' Day in the town of Apex, and encourage residents to immerse themselves in celebrations of indigenous culture and history, and remember who called Apex home first. Receiving a proclamation tonight are my good friends, Jaslin Kanzaya, J.D. Freeman, and members of the Triangle Native American Society. So if you would, please come up.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. We are here with Triangle Native American Society, and we invite you to come and join us here in Apex again for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'll say, we cover the whole triangle, and we have to give a big shout out to the town of Apex for being amazing partners, hosting Indigenous Peoples' Day for many years now, and really showing what true partnership can look like. So we hope you'll want to come and join us there, and also that same weekend, join us out at Dix Park, October eleventh, for the intertribal powwow, which is one of the largest in the state. We have been here since time immemorial. We are still here. We are a living culture. We are gathering persimmons today and processing them into pulp. And so we invite you to come out and join us, and I know you have one of your own here in Apex.
I would just like to say, my name is J.D. Freeman. I'm a member of the Lumbee Tribe, but also Apex resident for the past, gosh, almost seven or eight years now. But I've been able to emcee this event for the past four or five years, and really want to thank the town for all the effort and support that they give us to put this on, and it keeps growing every year. We invite people to come out, see some great singers, some great dancers, and hopefully, great food. So I'd love to see you all out there. Thank you, and thank you, town.
Okay, we'll move now to set a regular meeting agenda. The meeting agenda is in front of you. Are there any recommended changes before we approve it? Hearing none.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. All right, motion carries. We'll move now to public forum. This is an opportunity for community members to speak. Please remember your time. We have a different clock here, right in front. Three minutes, unless you have four or more people, you get nine minutes. So we'll get moving right into it. So Ralph Ripper, if you would, please come up, and Mr. Clerk, nine minutes. You have four or more people with you. All in red shirts, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ralph Ripper. I live in Jordan Point neighborhood, thirty-four eighteen Jordan Shires Drive. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys today about the data center proposal in New Hill. Also like to take the time to thank you for setting up the all-day workshop on January twenty-second with the planning department and the council to discuss planning for data centers. And I'd like to thank you also for identifying that a sound expert needs to be hired to improve the town's noise ordinance. You guys are listening to us, and we appreciate it. We won't pass that on. I'm a fire captain in Raleigh. I have over thirty years of experience, and I'd like to share my concerns with building a data center the size of the one proposed by the Nuteli Group in a what's currently a primary residential area. I'd like to talk about the nature of the development within two miles of the residential areas. Within that circle of two miles is almost all residential currently. The size of the project will stretch resources, including water, power, and emergency response services. There is potential for environmental sound and noise pollution, and there is potential for an environmental disaster. It's low rate, but it's high risk. The residents in this area fought and lost some years ago when the water reclamation facility was built. So we know what we're up against, and we know that we may not be able to keep this from happening. So we are asking for the size and the scope of this project to be considered, and for the use of the equipment that will lead to pollution and possible environmental disaster to be considered. If Apex becomes a household name in America due to a disaster, that will be the end of the peak of good living. So inside of the two-mile circle of ground zero where the where the data center is proposed, includes the water reclamation plant, and just catches the corner of the Sharon Harris Nuclear Plant Facility. Other than those two things, it is one hundred percent residential currently. Clearly, land used to this point has been residential. The development shows, the development map Apex puts out shows a potential population in excess of five thousand residents in this circle with more coming every day. This area is really just beginning to develop, and the town needs to plan carefully to maintain the quality of life Apex is known for. The hazards that need to be considered with a facility so close to so much residential growth. Power usage, three hundred megawatts. This is three times larger than the largest currently in North Carolina, which is in Marble in Cherokee County, which is near where I grew up. So I'm familiar with that area, and it is very sparsely populated. Water usage, these facilities use millions of gallons of water per day. There are centers in Georgia and Indiana that have caused residential wells to dry up. So the residents need assurances that this will not happen here. Air pollution, pollution from diesel generators being tested on a regular basis, not just in emergencies and outages, they will be tested weekly, monthly, per the manufacturers. The risk of pollution from a fire, including toxic smoke and toxic runoff. Light pollution from buildings that are seventy feet tall and well lit for security, and sound pollution. Again, I'd like to thank you guys for committing to look at the town's ordinance. That may not affect this development, but it will in the future. And then emergency response, which is my job. These are large buildings, potentially surrounded by large generators, a hundred, three thousand kilowatt generators. What will access look like? There needs to be space to get equipment into place to fight a potential fire. Fire trucks need space to maneuver and set up efficiently. They're much bigger than a car. A hundred-foot ladder truck is forty-plus feet long. And it requires time and space to position for best access. Getting close for maximum reach for those a hundred-foot ladders means risking losing your truck if the fire gets bigger. Sixty-to-seventy-foot buildings will max out the reach of the current ladder trucks. A hundred-foot ladder truck doesn't necessarily mean it'll reach a hundred feet with the offset and the positioning that will be reduced. So with this kind of facility, there may not be any safe way to set up interior operations, fight it from the inside because of the what's in the buildings. So it will likely be fought by the systems that are put in by the builder, sprinklers or whatever system they have, and that will be supplemented by surround and drown by the fire department. The runoff from multiple streams of water at a thousand gallons a minute per stream, potentially mixed with hazardous materials, could be a large issue. Four ladders at the corner of the building, a thousand gallons each, that's four thousand gallons a minute. That's a river. It'll cut its own ditch, and it'll go where it wants to, and it'll be toxic potentially. Access issues due to high-level security, access to the property, and then to the building. That'll take time. The first engine will likely be setting up command, maybe doing some recon, and requesting resources. They won't be pulling lines and fighting fire right away. There's not going to be time. This gives the fire time to grow. Lithium batteries. Proposed to use lithium batteries for UPS, undererated power supply, so that the power won't momentarily go off while the generators are kicking on. That would require thousands of batteries the size of the battery used in a Tesla, an electric vehicle. Lithium batteries require a different strategy to extinguish. Water is not effective once thermal runaway occurs, which basically means the chemical reaction is making its own heat. The Raleigh Fire Department, where I work, has purchased fireproof blankets to extinguish emergency vehicle, or electric vehicle fires. You can't put a blanket on a building, so this will be a surround and drown. Lithium battery storage facility in Spain burned for three days. Residents were unable to leave their houses due to toxic smoke. They were sheltered in place. And we all remember EQ Environmental here. We are asking that lithium batteries not be used. Diesel generators, hundreds of gallons of diesel fuel in tanks for a hundred generators, another risk environmental disaster. They're huge, they're loud, they use lots of fuel, and they create lots of pollution. So we're asking that a cleaner source of backup power be considered. The response, emergency response to this is two miles from the nearest fire station. It's Apex Fire Station Two. Google says that's four minutes. In a fire truck, it's probably a little longer than that. Again, this engine will likely not be directly engaged in fighting fire right away. They're going to be trying to get the resources they need. I'm not going into something like this without backup. That's, that's not going to happen. So it's not going to happen here either. Ten minutes to the next closest station, which is Apex Five. They got an engine, no ladder. So enough resources to get any kind of an attack plan started are likely fifteen-plus minutes away. So when you consider the response time, dispatch time, turnout time, et cetera, this will allow any fire that is not controlled by the building systems to reach a point where it's not going to be controlled. Then we'll have to consider evacuation or shelter in place orders. We'll have toxic runoff and toxic smoke. Again, the master stream surround and drown, which leads to its own set of issues. Is the hydrant system capable of feeding that? Does the town need more equipment closer to the area to respond in a more timely manner with an appropriate level of staffing? The answer is yes. Another station with a ladder and an engine, enough personnel for three shifts, plus two trucks at a million dollars apiece currently. And the lead time for new apparatus right now is years, not months. It'll take time to buy land, build a station. How long will it take to hire an additional fifteen to thirty personnel to staff that station with one or two companies? And what is that cost going to be? So this is what we're going to do. We need to start doing it now. I'll leave you some questions related to the data center. Is the scale and scope of this development right for this location? Is it appropriate for what is right now a primary residential area? Is the town ready to spend the money to manage this type of facility? Is it even manageable by a town that has the size of Apex with the resources we have? And are we willing to trade our quality of life for tax dollars? Thank you for listening. We would like the town of Apex to continue to be the peak of good living.
I'd like to call up Glenn Ryan. Glenn Ryan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would also like to address the data center. Is that allowed? Very good. Mayor and council members, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to voice a concern about the data center. My name is Glenn Rennie. I live at three-five-three-seven Jordan Shires Drive, just down the street. And I have a master's degree in electrical engineering from NC State, GO-PAC. I'd like to share with you some recent developments that may bear on your decisions. First, a little bit of history. In nineteen ninety-four, Netscape released the first graphical internet browser. I don't know if you remember, but when we went from text files to graphic files, the data traffic on the internet went through the roof. So everybody thought it was going to go like that forever, and people started investing like crazy. Vast amounts of money went into networks and hardware and all kinds of things, but nothing goes up forever. In March two thousand, the bottom fell out. I know, I had a startup here in the Triangle, and things got very, very tough. Today, we have with the release of ChatGPT, we have the AI boom, demand for compute power is going up like crazy, and now we're building data centers like there's no tomorrow. About a year and a half ago, a company spun out of Google. It's called Grok. And they've developed a new chip that does for data what Henry Ford did for automobiles. And this thing is designed for data flow, so it can do AI computations in ten percent of the time. Hang on, let me get it right. Ten times as fast as current AI chips. And nine months ago, a Chinese company, DeepSeek, released their large language model. And that, because they couldn't get access to the really high-performance chips, they had to figure out ways to get it done on slow chips. They came up with a new way of teaching these models, and it runs in ten percent of the time that the old models did. So now we've got faster chips and, and more efficient software, so we need fewer data centers, not more. So there's an interesting report that came out from the IEEFA, and I'll, I'll give you the reference to it. The risk of AI-driven, overbuilt infrastructure is real. Two things I want to point out. Two of the largest independent power producers in, in the United States are warning their investors that we're overbuilding data centers. These hyperscaler companies, they all think they're going to win all the business. So now we're building two or three times as many data centers as the market can support. The second thing is, in February, the CEO of Microsoft himself said there's an overbuild of AI data centers, and he is switching from building data centers to leasing data centers because he doesn't want to get stuck with underutilized hardware. Do a, just do a quick search, oh, I'm sorry. Do a quick search of, of data center overbuild, and you would not believe the number of references to data centers that are being canceled or companies who are afraid of overbuild. And my question is, what happens if this data center gets built? But we never get the computers in there. We never create the jobs. We never get the tax base. We never get the revenue. What are we going to do?
Thank you, Mr. Rennie.
Thank you.
Don Cuselino.
Don Cuselino, thirty-six, thirty-two Bosco Road. Good evening, Mayor and Council. On September tenth, a husband, a father, a man who spoke openly about family and values was taken by an assassin's bullet, Charlie Kirk. His voice may have been silenced, but his message of faith, family, and freedom of speech continues. What is telling is that this government has not acknowledged his death or even paused for a moment of silence. That speaks volumes. We live in the freest nation on earth. Yet here and around Apex, freedom feels far away. Our communities are being dismantled by reckless overdevelopment that residents never asked for. Instead, Apex chases the next shiny project, while basic needs like the year-long unresolved utility billing pro, billing. utility billing problems, those fixes are still remaining broken. This is not just about residents speaking for three minutes while the council nods politely. This is not real change. We have discovered the law, and justice will prevail. You've ignored eighteen of my open public records requests. These are simple things like the American Rescue Plan reimbursement to the US Treasury for $400,000, or why council meeting minutes from July through December of 2022 are missing from the Apex website. Your silence tells me what is true in your heart, that you do not want the public to see what is behind the curtain. I may not know the reason, but I do know there are red flags in your accounting. At least thirty-eight supplier contracts sit at $999,999. Just one dollar threshold, under the threshold, which would require higher scrutiny and approval. The federal government takes that seriously, and so does the state. This is not about politics, it is about families, safety, nature, and preserving the place we all call home. It's about the government doing the job it is meant to do, serving its people with integrity and humility. My rights do not come from Apex Council or from Wake County. They are guaranteed by the Constitution and given to me by my Creator. Among them is the right to speak freely and to petition my government for answers. Yet when Apex refuses to respond to records requests, you're silencing me and silencing the truth. The public has the right to know. May we honor the memory of Charlie Kirk as we continue the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cuselino. Ray Hudson.
Hello. Fran Hudson, 5524 Rex Road. It's interesting, as I thought about what I was going to say tonight, I was thinking through, okay, the law and how everything fits together, and listening to the last thirty-five minutes of the ninth meeting was very disturbing to me because it showed me that the town council doesn't, I guess, it appeared to me that there was no knowledge of the law. There was dissent, there was conflict in what was supposed to be done, and Robert's rules are not the law. They're actually procedures that the attorney pointed out, you follow if there is no rule. And McAfee did say that the charter had the rule in there that they could split up the proposal that you had made, and then you tried to overturn the actual town charter by saying that you're not going to allow that. That's very concerning to me because I've studied the Constitution for years now, and when you read the Constitution, if you haven't read the North Carolina Constitution, you need to go read it now. You need to understand it like the back of your hand, because Sections One, Two, and Three of Article One are to protect the people. They're also, so number one is the rights are protected, and that includes our property. The people also have all political power covered in Article One, Section Two. And then number three is, we have the right to question the integrity of the government. So you had a problem with the people questioning the integrity of the staff. That is our right as the people to do. So it seems to me that Tracy Taylor was actually doing her job and honoring her oath of office by standing with the people and saying, hey, I support you. I don't know how it could be any more clear. You also need to know the limits of your power. The Constitution protects the rights of the people. It sets up the legislature so they can create towns by the charters. So that's done through the legislature. The legislature is limited power, and they can only give power that is limited. So they cannot give you any more power than they have themselves. The people have all the power. So when we tell you we don't want something, if we tell you we're against some decision that y'all are up, have up in front of you to make, and we say we don't want it, you have to honor that. That is our right as people, and it's your duty, per your oath to the Constitution, that each one of you had to take. I mean, I'm just baffled by watching town council meetings and seeing the things that are approved, and seeing the people come up here and say, hey, that bothers me. I don't like this. I don't want this. And it goes forward anyway. Or not answering public records requests, that's a violation of rights too. There's just so many things that you really need to focus on the law and know the true law and know what you swore an oath to, and know what you're supposed to do so that the people don't have to keep trying to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, town council members, staff. My name is James Jesser, Elk River Drive, Apex. I attended and witnessed the last Apex Town Council meeting. In addition, I read the Facebook posting by town council members in their vain attempt to rewrite and control the narrative regarding the disgraceful behavior at the September Ninth meeting. I will not waste my allotted time on Mr. Gant's slurs regarding me or other members of the courtyards on hold. All I will say is that Mayor Gilbert and Mr. Zingerman had the courage to meet with us. You, Mr. Gant, used this platform to disparage us, save from voter retribution, and came up a little short on courage as you exposed your true talent in smirking, walking away, and intrigue. Intrigue is the thing I wish to concentrate on. I believe that the September Ninth meeting was a carefully choreographed attempt on the part of several members of the town council to embarrass, humiliate, and minimize Mayor Gilbert. A little cabal of town council members used a very eager Mr. Gant, who despite acknowledging a private meeting with the mayor on the topic of BOA nominations, felt compelled to lead a public insurrection against the mayor, aided and abetted by Mr. Zingerman, Ms. Cullingsworth, and the usually mute town attorney, Ms. Hoey. The architect of this pathetic attempt at government obstructionism and control finally revealed himself when Mr. McAfee just happened to find this obscure town statue at his fingertips to support Mr. Gant's motion. It was your Godfather Bronzini moment, Mr. McAfee, and you should have been a little less slick in your revealing contribution. Between his service in the Apex Police Department and his six years as mayor, Jacques Gilbert has honorably and nobly served the residents of Apex for thirty-five years. Let that sink in. Mayor Gilbert deserved better than your feeble little conspiracy on September 9th. Mayor Gilbert is Apex's Julius Caesar, and the rest of you are sniveling little Cassioses, full of ambition, each armed with a dull dagger, because Mayor Gilbert is still standing proud, embraced by an equally proud supporters. TC members, you abused your power on September 9th, and the town of Apex suffered as a result. Thank you, Mayor Gilbert. Stand strong.
Alexis Kennedy, 106 Buckaven Court. Good evening, council members. Last month, a kitchen fire forced my family to evacuate our home. Thanks to our call center's efficiency and Apex firefighters' swift response, we were safe. Lesson learned, self-cleaning mode is to be avoided. I'm grateful for my family's safety, but my heart is heavy. Every day, I see violence in Gaza funded by our tax dollars. Two hundred and twenty-three million was sent last week. In Gaza, there are no firefighters, though. Only men pulling children from bombed, burning homes with their bare hands. All the while, our government hides the truth about Gaza and the West Bank. A recent report came out estimating that twenty-eight percent of Gaza's population, six hundred and eighty thousand people, have been killed since October 2023. An Israeli general came forth calling it a lie, admitting to two hundred thousand casualties, ten percent of Gaza's population, saying, I quote, "This isn't a gentle war. We took the gloves off." Israeli army data shows eighty-three percent of those killed are civilians. My family's safety shows our community's strength, but true community knows no borders. Let's uncover the truth, push for immediate policies, prioritizing human lives, and stand for justice, starting right here in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker.
Shouldn't surprise no one here tonight, I'm here to talk about Christmas. Seriously. My name's Mike Rusher, 914 Britley Way in Apex. I've had the privilege of serving the Haddon Hall HOA Board for ten years now, last three as president. With eight hundred and forty-six homes and nearly twenty-five hundred residents, I'm here tonight to request the town's assistance in addressing a recurring safety issue during the annual Christmas parade in downtown Apex. Haddon Hall takes great pride in supporting the town's events, and our community is intentional about embracing Apex traditions. Personally, I've worked with town staff on numerous occasions over the years, including with inspections, community development, and environmental programs when I served on the first environmental advisory board. I share this because I know firsthand how effective collaboration between residents and town staff can be, and I believe we can solve this issue together in the next six weeks if Haddon Hall can receive the support of the mayor, the town council, and the staff. I do plan to present this to the Apex Police Department as well. The very qualities that make Apex a great place to live also create an expectations for proactive planning. Unfortunately, during the Christmas parade, which we all love, nearly a mile of roadway inside of Haddon Hall is unnavigable before and after the parade. The main artery of Haddon Hall, which is Britley Way, is about a mile long and connects both Salem Street and Apex Peakway. You've got maps in your packet. At the Britley Way entry points of both Salem Street and Apex Peakway, cars unfortunately park on both sides of the road in order to make it downtown, and they walk there, and for several hundred yards, it reduces the passage to a single narrow lane of roadway. This situation's grown worse each year, reaching a breaking point in 2024. Thankfully, nothing bad happened in the neighborhood. The result, as you can imagine, is gridlocked, blocked access for residents, and severe safety hazards in the whole neighborhood. There's one entry point that comes off of Williams Street at the Haddon Hall exit. So we, to address this, we respectfully recommend three specific actions. One, relocate the Salem Street closure just a hundred feet north on Salem Street, north of Britley Way. Number two, deploy cones and Type II folding barricades, the sandwich board type, along Britley Way to prevent parking on both sides of the street. And number three, use Type III standing barricades at the designated closure points at Salem and Apex Peakway. I've included maps and photos in the attached documents to show exactly where these measures can be placed, and in addition, I'd like to highlight again, just moving the North Salem Street closure one hundred feet north of Britley Way will solve about half of these traffic problems in our neighborhood. So thank you for your time. We've got two seconds, and your consideration of the safety improvements will help keep our neighborhood safe and traffic orderly during one of the most wonderful times of the year in Apex. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rusher. All right, that concludes the public forum. We'll move now into public hearings. We have annexation number 803, 1211 Old Raleigh Road, heard with public hearing two, rezoning case 25 CZ07, same location. Lawrence Dardemire.
All right, good evening, everyone. This property is located in this general area on Old Raleigh Road within the ETJ. In addition to the rezoning, the applicant is also seeking to annex for town services. The subject property is approximately 6.40 acres and is located north, on the north side of Old Raleigh Road, and south of Shepherd's Vineyard. The property includes a residential structure, mature trees, a pond, and an intermediate stream that bisects the property from the western property line to the eastern property line. The stream and pond have a fifty-foot riparian buffer. The property is currently zoned residential agricultural. The adjacent zoning districts are to the north and east, medium density, to the southeast, medium-density conditional zoning, to the southwest, medium density, and to the west, residential agricultural. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to medium-density conditional zoning. The 2045 land use map classification for the subject property is medium-density residential. The proposed rezoning to medium-density conditional zoning is consistent with that land use classification. A letter of impact from Wake County Public School Systems was received for the rezoning and is included in the staff report packet. Wake County Public School Systems indicates that the schools at elementary, middle, and high school grade level within the current assignment area for the proposed rezoning development are anticipated to have sufficient capacity for future students. The applicant conducted neighborhood meetings on May 14th and July 21st, 2025. The neighborhood meeting reports are attached. A full list of the proposed uses and zoning conditions can be found on page two of the staff report. The applicant is proposing the use of single-family and accessory apartment. Besides the architectural zoning conditions related to residential development, there are a few zoning conditions that I would like to point out. The first one, a maximum of three residential lots shall be permitted. A minimum of thirty percent of the gross parcel area will be preserved as a resource conservation area. Homeowner association covenants shall not restrict the construction of accessory dwelling units. The transportation-related conditions include, the developer shall dedicate public right-of-way fifty-five feet from roadway center line for the entirety of the parcel frontage along Old Raleigh Road, based on the total ultimate section of one hundred and ten foot feet in the Apex transportation plan. The developer shall complete frontage widening based on the four-lane median-divided typical section with bike lanes and ten-foot side paths in the Apex transportation plan only for the frontage of the project proposed for residential lots. So probably along this location. The remainder of the frontage not being developed for residential lots can remain as interim section with sidewalk until such time a project funded by others proposes to widen Old Raleigh Road. So probably where the stream and riparian buffer is right here. And then the last one is, in the event of the developer proposes a public street to access the lots, the developer will be required to include a stub street to the parcel at the west. This rezoning was exempt from meeting with the Apex Environmental Advisory Board per UDO Section 2.1. However, the applicant has proposed environmental conditions that we typically see suggested by the EAB. In addition to the environmental conditions, the applicant is also proposing conditions related to the existing ponds and riparian buffer. The first zoning condition, to preserve and protect existing wildlife species, existing ponds shall be preserved if structurally sound. The pond will be evaluated by a geotechnical engineer prior to subdivision plan approval. The second zoning condition, no development other than utility- The second zoning condition, no development other than utilities shall be allowed north or east of the riparian buffer. For additional context, the pond and dam's condition will be evaluated during subdivision plan approval. If the pond is drained, the location of the riparian buffer will change from the pond bank to wherever the new stream bank forms. If the dam is removed, the development will be required to wait six months to determine where the stream reforms, and then the stream buffer would be fifty feet from the new stream bank instead of from the pond bank. Housing staff do not recommend an affordable housing condition to be included due to the limited size of the rezoning. The 2045 land use map classifies the subject property as medium-density residential. The proposed rezoning to medium-density conditional zoning is consistent with that land use classification. The proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest as the proposed zoning district and conditions allow the property to be developed in a manner that is consistent with the residential character of the area and limits allowable density consistent with the subdivision to the north. The proposed rezoning includes environmental conditions that exceed the standard Unified Development Ordinance requirements, and it dedicates right-of-way along the parcel's frontage consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan. Additionally, the proposed rezoning will require the development to complete frontage widening improvements along the proposed residential lots consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan. Planning Board heard this at their August eleventh meeting and with a vote of nine to one recommended approval with an additional condition to limit density to three residential lots total. The reason for dissenting votes included concern about the site being developed at all with the dam, climate change, and any disturbance to lots with two streams, which would cause additional flooding. In response to the Planning Board's recommendation, the applicant proposed a revised condition to limit the density to three residential lots, which can be found on zoning condition number one of your staff report. So it's been updated with your most recent packet. Planning staff recommends approval of rezoning case twenty-five CZ zero seven with conditions offered by the applicant. I'll do my best to answer your questions, as well as we have our applicant present as well.
Any questions for Ms. Stottermeyer?
Ms. Stottermeyer, can you speak to... This is a theoretical... If this rezoning had included the parcel to the west, would that have triggered more frontage improvements or other kind of public goods associated with the rezoning? I ask because I'm having a little trouble weighing the public good with what we're getting with this development. Even the number of driveways is not going to go down. So I was trying to figure out, like, would the entire frontage be required or would other things be required if this was a little bit larger with that other piece?
I think we would definitely evaluate if this parcel right here is included. I know the reason why this part of the parcel wasn't included was due to environmental constraints of the existing riparian buffer. So Russell is here to speak more to that if necessary, but just given where this is, staff was comfortable with... Because based on the zoning condition about no development to the east or north of the riparian buffer, that gives only so much of the area that can be developed for lots. So that was the reason why that was added, but we would definitely look at that possibility. And I can also have, as mentioned, Russell speak to that, but that would be something we would be looking at as well if that was added per the Apex Transportation Plan.
Would it be possible, by the way, no direct... Sorry to ask these, but to connect the daycare to... If they had included that next parcel, would they be able to use the entrance of the daycare and then a stub street out that way, or would that have been impossible to reduce the number of driveways on Old Raleigh? Well, I mean, there could be some agreement that could have had. I'm trying to reduce the number of driveways, in theory, on Old Raleigh, considering how busy their road is and presumably will get busier over time.
Russell, do you mind if I have you answer that question?
I know it wouldn't design that way, but it just...
With this project, they've got a requirement for a shared driveway anyway, so it would just be one driveway. To your question about development to the west, if they picked up that additional lot to the west, we would ask for additional frontage widening to connect over to the daycare. However, I don't see how there'd be an opportunity to connect physically to the daycare to use their access because there's not a cross-access easement. That is private property, so there was nothing dedicated to allow them to access. But it would reduce... In other words, if there's future development on the other one, there would be an additional driveway there, which there is today. So it would just be using that same driveway. So there'd be this driveway plus the driveway on the adjacent lot versus maybe one driveway to serve maybe four lots instead of three lots. I don't know what they would end up doing on that parcel.
Okay. Is there any history of creating a cross-access easement that wasn't anticipated at the time of building in Apex?
Typically, it would be public street stubs when we anticipate residential, or it'd be a cross-access easement if we anticipate commercial. So this is a situation where you had a commercial lot with residential to the east, and it was also predates some of our regulations in the UDO concerning cross-access as well. So there was nothing obtained at that time. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I have a question related to the dam. Is there a concern about... Because from my understanding, this has happened before, where you have limited units having a dam in place and then unable to maintain that dam because it can be expensive for upkeep and to make sure the safety stays up to standard. When you only have three lots contributing to the upkeep of this, that draws a concern for me. So any thoughts on that?
From a staff perspective, I can... We have our stormwater staff. If you'd like to have either Hannah or Jessica to answer that question, since they would be the ones looking at the permits for that.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. Hannah Bear, stormwater engineer. We would not be maintaining this as a town-owned. This would be HOA-maintained.
Right. That's my concern.
And that's a valid concern.
So if, for example, if we had fifty lots contributing and maintaining, it would be significantly different than three lots contributing and maintaining this dam on a regular basis. So I mean, I'm pretty concerned about how that's going to be maintained. And I mean, this is also just knowing the geography here, right? And knowing the level of, you know, there's a pond there. It gets very wet. It is very... In my opinion, high-level risk for flooding in this area. So any thoughts related to that?
Well, in terms of what we require, if they were to grade and clear the trees, we would require them to prove that the flooding should not increase, but would in fact either stay the same or decrease. So I mean, mathematically, it's sound. And we could require... And I think there was something about... Do you know? Wasn't there a requirement where we were going to make them...
So because it is in the new space and the stream buffer determination, any buffer impacts will have to go through NCD EQ instead of the town. So that is if the dam condition evaluation needs... It does have to happen prior to site plan approval. And if they drain the pond, the location of the riparian buffers could change the pond bank, which I've already mentioned. So the aerial show tree is on the pond dam, so it may need some rehab if they want to keep it. But either the rehab or breaching of the dam does not require a buffer authorization from NCD EQ if they meet all the deemed allowable conditions. So that's where stormwater would have to come into play to review and work with NCD EQ. And if they want to breach the dam, they'll need to submit a dam breach plan for them to review. And during that review, they would verify if it meets the above thresholds. I can go into more detail about that. Or if they would need a separate 401, 404 permit and a buffer authorization. So there are multiple layers of review that go into it, not just from a site plan perspective, but NCD EQ just because it's in the new space. So that's just kind of some staff level that hopefully I can add to Hannah's information. And the applicant is here as well to discuss potentially the HOA-maintained if necessary. But just from an overall staff perspective, and we would look at this during subdivision plan if this is approved of the pre-application meeting. We would look at it for more of an intensive procedural of what is needed.
Thank you.
So hopefully that.
I guess my question is, in layman's terms, under what conditions will the dam be removed and the pond drained, and under what conditions would it stay? Is it... It sounds like it's not a choice they make. It's not like a certain... Are you saying if the dam has deteriorated to a certain point to be allowed to remove it? Is that what it is?
So the stream is buffered coming in. Therefore, the pond is very likely to also be buffered. So it's not in their best interest to drain it because the pond, when it reforms, it could reform in a worse spot. So it would be up to the applicant, and all of this would have to go through DEQ because it is in the news. We don't have jurisdiction as town of Apex. So that would... Everything revolving it would have to go through the state.
Is it fair to say that the pond today helps stormwater control? Because the lower-lying areas in Shepherd's Vineyards are prone to flooding, like Ms. Kelling just pointed out. So removing this pond, would that trigger a different requirement from the town in terms of stormwater control if the pond were to be removed?
Not necessarily. So yes, the pond does help collect runoff. But it's, as Lauren mentioned before, if they were to drain a buffered pond, they would be required to wait six months to see where and if the pond reforms. If the pond reforms, then the buffers would automatically be reapplied. So in that case, the stormwater control measure factor doesn't come in until you talk about how much land is disturbed. And based on the size of the parcel, I think they'll have to do a stormwater control measure regardless on top of potentially leaving this pond.
Yeah, so... And that's kind of in the schematics that we've seen in the packet. There's a stormwater facility in addition to the pond. So I'm just wondering if the pond is no more, right? Would that stormwater control measure be larger to accommodate for what the pond used to provide previous?
No. So if the pond were to be drained and then, let's say, it didn't get reformed, the stream bank ideally would still stay. And so the stream itself, that just means that the water is moving on. It's not necessarily being collected like we initially thought. So the stormwater control measurement requirement is still only based off of the land that they disturbed. So if there was no more pond, that would just mean that the water's not getting collected there, so it shouldn't have an effect either way.
Thank you.
My understanding of the applicant's position on the pond is that they're going to make an effort to inspect it and determine whether or not it's, I guess, sound, for lack of a better phrase. But my question is, what about the determination of it, you know, being sound now, but the continued maintenance of it if the HOA should decide they're not going to maintain it? Or there's active efforts for waste? I didn't see... I did not see that as a condition or a factor within any of the conditions from the applicant. And I ask you guys this question, but I hope the applicant is listening because I will ask them the exact same question. What provisions do we have to help ensure that we don't have essentially the waste scenario? We're not fixing it, but we're certainly not doing anything to keep it from falling apart.
Thank you. It's time to hear from the applicant.
Hey, good evening. Zach Shipman. I'm a civil engineer. I represent the applicant. So all good questions about the stormwater. Our intention is to leave the pond. We had significant neighbor property feedback that they wanted that pond to stay, so that's our intention as well. But part of the structural analysis of that is we'll get a geotechnical engineer. They'll look for things like seepage for structural defects in that pond. And our intent is, if there's anything found, we'd fix that now and render that pond structurally sound so that it can stay in place. With regards to maintenance, you're right, this is three lots. The HOA would be tasked with maintaining that dam, but I think the idea would be, let's fix it to a point where it's good to go for many years. And that way, we can address the neighbor's feedback if we want this pond to stay while also making sure that it's safe and cared for. From a stormwater perspective, we're going to do another stormwater SEM that would treat that pre- and post-runoff so that we would ensure that our post-development runoff is less than the pre-development, equal to or less than, that would hopefully assuage some feedback about, you know, is there a drainage issue in this area? That our new pond will capture all of that and treat it for water quality, also limits some flooding concerns. So in an ideal world, we would leave the existing pond, and you'd have another pond right beside it that would treat stormwater in a safe manner. So... Other question with regards to driveways. We did talk to the property owner to the west. We invited him to join our petition. He had no interest in doing that. And so from that perspective, we kind of had to abandon that idea for cross-access or stubs to the western property line. So that invitation was made, but he declined to participate. And appreciate your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any other questions for the applicant? Here and now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Stottermeyer? All right, thank you. We're opening up public hearing for this item. First speaker, Don Cuzzolino.
Do I get six minutes? Is there a rezoning and annexation?
This is going to be set to a three-minute segue.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for confirming. Don Cuzzolino, thirty-six, thirty-two Bosco Road. I'm going to get into something I wanted to talk about. I just wanted to say that the applicant and this council are not prepared to discuss this application tonight because everything's in theory. You don't have any engineering studies. You don't know about the pond. You don't know how much the ongoing costs of this HOA are going to be. This is a major issue in this area. It is not just building it and getting it right on day one. It is very expensive to maintain these retaining ponds. And many speakers have talked about this in the community. So I don't think the whole financial due diligence or environmental concerns have been even gracefully touched. So on to that. I'm going to talk about the zoning application. What is confusing, and I think a lot of people are confused, I'm confused. On paper, it looks like three lots. Well, it sounds like three houses or something. It is so confusing. How many freaking houses are going to be on this property? And you've got a unified, UDO Unified Development Ordinance allowing accessory apartments. So those are detached structures. So that means there's really not just three units or whatever it is because we don't know. It's not in the application. We do not know what is going to be built on this property. So that is just no transparency whatsoever. And then on top of that, the neighborhood meetings, right? They're asking basic questions here. How big are the houses going to be? And the answer is, we don't know. Maybe three thousand to forty-five hundred square feet. Well, that's not good enough for people anymore. Yet the Wake County Public Schools impact, they list the project sizes are two thousand to five thousand square feet. And that's just the single structure, right? Not the accessory apartment. Who knows? That has a kitchen and a bath and uses sewage and all that stuff. So how big is that? Oh, and the prices are seven hundred and fifty thousand to one and a half million dollars. Is that the market rate now? And this is why we can't do affordable housing or, you know, because we want to make a profit here. It's a wide range, doesn't give clarity, and it's a hundred-page-long, this application, guys. Doesn't address anything the neighbors asked about density, affordability, impacts of the schools, traffic, neighborhood character. It's just completely vague. And this may seem small, but it's a precedent you're setting here, and you continue to do this. You continue to approve vague, inconsistent, incomplete applications, and you erode the trust time and time again in this community and the surrounding communities of New Hill and Friendship that are going to be there. Now, we're not going to be part of Apex and be wiped away. So I just think you should be held to a higher standard, and I think the residents should get the answers they... should get the answers they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cazalino. Nick Bryant.
Nick Bryant, 1023 New Dover Road. As I spoke last time, as it appears on paper for the project, I do look forward to not developing anything east, including the pond, and of course, keeping the buffer. Therefore, if we can keep the number of homes, lots down for that, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. All right, that's the last speaker. Back to council for discussion. Public hearing is closed.
Do have one quick question for staff. There was a school impact letter this time again, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could you remind me what that was?
Yes, and I'll read it from the staff report. My apologies. A letter of impact from Wake County Public School Systems was received for the resounding and is included in the staff report packet. Wake County Public School Systems indicates that schools at elementary, middle, and high school grade levels within the current assignment area for the proposed rezoning development are anticipated to have sufficient capacity for future students.
Thank you.
I think it's really positive that this application was updated to specify three units being built. Three units per acre would entail them to 18. And you can imagine a situation in the future where some stormwater engineer determines that, you know, maybe they're working for the state, maybe conditions change, look at the stream buffer and decide it's not there, but it's not, it's not an intermittent stream anymore. You know, these things can get, I mean, this one, maybe not so much, but you know, sometimes they're subjective. You can get the right guy saying you can have a stream, then you can have this entire property developed for 18 units. But the zoning as it's written today and proposed now commits to only three units.
I like the idea of having the secondary stormwater control measure in place. I think that will help downstream in Shepherd's Vineyards. I think that's a, that's a positive addition. Limited number of units, right? Consistent with the neighborhoods surrounding it, as stated in the packets. So, I think, considering the alternative, right, it's like a higher number of units in, in this space, I think this is probably the best option for this, this particular area.
I'll say that. My concern about the pond, my biggest concern was that essentially there would be an inspection of the pond, and after the inspection of, of that, of that dam, essentially kind of, you know, the idea, well, it'll fall apart. And the idea that there's a commitment to make it sufficient enough so that there doesn't have to be the rebuild, or it just falling apart, I think is a positive sign. I also like the idea that we're not getting 18 units on this. I think that's a, you know, three units, I think is much more in character with the rest of the community that's out there. You know, that, that, that pond is a, it, it, you know, it's a factor when it comes to those streams and the flooding. So, that's something that's got to be maintained. So, I appreciate the applicant's efforts to try to maintain that, as well as though, taking, taking advantage of actually complying with a lot of our requirements that the EIA, that would come out of the EAB, but they didn't have to go there, so.
I appreciate that aspect of things. I'm making motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion to second.
Annexation. For both. For both the annexation and the rezoning.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
All right. 3-2. Thank you. All right, you have public hearing three and four.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Here to present, Annexation 806 and Res zoning Case 25 CZ09, Jesse Drive Industrial. This rezoning and annexation are located in the southeast quadrant of the Town of Apex jurisdiction. It is currently located in the ETJ, and the applicant is requesting annexation at this time. The property is just under 52 acres and sits to the west and north of the Horton Park PUD. The site is filled with trees with two streams that can be found on the parcel. There is a Town of Apex water line that crosses the site to the north here along the proposed extension of Jesse Drive. And there is existing sewer, Forest Main, that you can see carved here through the site on the southeastern portion. This property only has one street stub currently, which is the terminus of Jesse Drive at the intersection of Horton Park Drive and Production. The current zoning of the property is residential agricultural. The land to the north and west are light industrial with a small section of land to the west zone, planning and development conditional zoning here. That is just beyond the boundary of the property where Middle Creek also flows along the boundary. The zoning to the south is rural residential and planning and development conditional zoning. There you will find the alignment of Glad Song Drive, which is this street here within the Horton Park PUD. And both the rural residential area and the planning and development area are both currently owned by Horton Park developers. To the east is a continuation of the planning and development conditional zoning of Horton Park. And on this southern piece, the PUD designates this as residential. And this northern piece here that is adjacent is currently designated as Tech Flex in that PUD. And there's also a small sliver of residential agricultural here, which will soon be recombined with the right-of-way for Horton Park Drive. The applicant is proposing to rezon the parcel to both industri- light industrial conditional zoning and medium-density residential conditional zoning for the primary intent of industrial development. The applicant held their neighborhood meetings on June 17th and August 8th of 2025, and those reports can be found in your staff report. The rezoning case did not, did meet with the environmental advisory board, and the list of recommended conditions are in the staff report with the applicant's responses, along with one non-conditioned recommendation from the EAB. The environmental zoning conditions that the applicant are proposing are very similar to what, what you've seen in previous cases of Apex Gateway, including tree replacement of trees greater than 24 inches and the preservation of 25% of the existing tree canopy on-site. Regarding the medium-density conditional zoning area here, the Wake County Public Schools' letter of impact was not requested for this rezoning since there's no proposed residential uses for that area. Additionally, the Town of Apex housing staff did not make a recommendation for affordable housing for that same reason. The 2045 land use map identifies the parcel as both industrial employment, office employment in this area, and medium-density residential on the southern part. Both proposed zoning districts are consistent with the land use classifications indicated on the map. This slide illustrates the areas where uses are restricted as outlined in Light Industrial Use Conditions Number Two and Three. And so, in the blue area, this is all where the light industrial conditional zoning will be. The use restriction of 300 feet for the shaded area shown is related to use condition number two, which prohibits uses such as brewery and distillery, along with machine welding shop, which is adjacent to the Tech Flex portion of Horton Park. And then to the south here, the applicant is proposing to prohibit a few more of those industrial uses as it is closer to the proposed residential area. So, things like warehousing, and then the building supplies wholesale, machine welding shop, things like that. And then, just to note that the pink area is the medium-density conditional zoning. That area is currently being proposed as only used as RCA or utility miner to get sewer connections, water connections, things like that through that area. Lastly, this, the purpose of this exhibit is to show the alignment of the future greenway on this parcel, as shown on the parks, on the park recreation. Greenway is an open space master plan. This dotted green line here is the alignment. It would, in the future, it would connect to the existing easement within Horton Park, but the applicant is proposing to construct and dedicate the easement from Jesse Drive here to the north along the property line, and then going on the north side of the stream here, and then terminating their construction within 150 linear feet of the medium-density conditional zoning boundary. And then from there, the applicant is offering to dedicate the greenway easement through the medium-density residential area to make the connection to the existing section in Horton Park.
Can you talk about why it's not going to go all the way? Why was it not pushed for and/or offered?
I cannot speak to why it was not offered. I believe, if I'm correct, industrial developments do not have to construct greenways. So, they're offered to construct and dedicate throughout the entire light industrial area is already above what is required. So, this is kind of a middle ground of, they're not going to make the impacts to the, especially to the stream in this southern area to make that connection in Horton Park, but they are willing to construct and dedicate easement throughout where they intend to actually develop. Because as was stated before, the medium-density area is being presented as just RCA. So, they're looking to just preserve that as much as possible. And in the future, when green, when the greenway connection can be made to finish that connection.
It seems like a very large development not to fill in a gap like that, in my opinion.
I understand. And I'll, I'll let the applicant address that when they have their chance. Planning staff does recommend approval of rezoning Case 25 CZ09 with the conditions as offered by the applicant. We find that the proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest as it will allow development of the property in a manner consistent with development to the north and allow for uses that will generate jobs and increase the tax base. This rezoning will also limit development within environmentally sensitive areas while providing areas closest to existing and anticipated residential parts of Horton Park as resource conservation area. Any other additional questions at this time for me?
Can you talk about the, the, the medium-density residential? I was surprised that, seeing that there's some buildable land in that area for something, even like affordable housing, why it was chosen to do the all RCA?
I can let the applicant respond to that.
Okay.
Would you like to have them answer now, or would you like to?
I, I can wait.
Okay. The applicant does have a presentation for this.
Mayor Gilbert, council members, my name is Gray Harold with Beacon Partners. Appreciate y'all's time tonight. I'm with Beacon Partners. We're out of the triangle, we have all of us in Raleigh. Y'all might have been familiar with us, with the Apex Gateway. We own and operate about 17 and a half million square feet across the Carolinas. Since we were last up here about two and a half years ago, we've delivered the first phase of Apex Gateway as of August of this year. So, really appreciate all the staff's efforts from everybody in planning to the inspectors, council, like y'all were a great help pushing this through. We had some very tight deadlines and were able to build, deliver the Coca-Cola. They relocated their C-suite in a distribution facility in the park, as well as our latest tenant, Life Science Logistics, who operated 326,000 square feet, which was a catalyst for the project. And, and just, again, thank you for staff and, and everybody in Apex for allowing that to happen. And also, we delivered Nightdale Gateway, which was a similar scale part to Apex Gateway. And we were honored to receive the 2025 Nightdale Gateway Community Appearance Award for our industrial building. We really take pride in the elevated features on the buildings, as you can see here in the slide. Just to highlight the site, we are to the south of the Apex Waste Water Treatment Plant, as well as the wall recycling in the current Apex Commerce Park, which is under development. The 2045 land use map, this kind of just highlights that we are bifurcating the site with the zoning. We struck it along the intermittent stream boundary with the industrial to the north and the medium-density to the south. To answer Councilmember Gantz's question, we, like, you can see from the aerials that the height, the site is heavily wooded. We wanted to be mindful of the neighbors to Horton Park on our south and east, or east, excuse me, to commit to an elevated resource conservation commitment. So, that's why we increased it to 25%, exceeding the UDO's 10% requirement, fully allocating it to that South District, only allowing two uses in that medium-density, which was the greenway as well as the utility miner application. This just kind of highlights the uses. We work with Joshua and staff to fully prohibit about a half dozen uses from our first submittal, as well as about a half a dozen uses on that eastern boundary to provide additional buffer from our neighbors on the Horton Park side. This is the greenway, proposed greenway dedication that conforms to the Town of Apex greenway plan. And to answer your question, we are proposing building it through our site within 150 feet of the Glad Song connection. The reason we did not fully commit to building the entire way is we're going to have to submit for a nationwide permit to impact wetlands. We're going to have to submit for a 401 and a 404. And while we're somewhat confident we're going to get it, we, we can't guarantee that the state's going to issue that, that impact. And we didn't want to have a zoning condition tied to a greenway connection that we couldn't get a permit through the state with. So, that's why we committed to dedicating the greenway alignment. We will obviously make sure the vertical and the horizontal alignments work with staff through the site plan and construction drawing process. But, but again, we will build it to somewhere in this vicinity right here. And then just to highlight, as Joshua mentioned, we made about 16 environmental conditions, which were similar to Apex Gateway. Some of the notable ones are, we're detaining the storm to the 25-year, which is, you know, 15 years above the UDO, the 25% RCA requirement, as well as the introducing green storm infrastructure devices for additional rainwater harvesting and retention on-site. Again, I'm Gray with Beacon. I'm happy to, to answer any questions staff has at this time. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Get up with RCA and why that choice and not maybe try to use that land for something else, considering it looks like there's a lot of wetlands on the site? And I figure, well, you up, you up the RCA, but you could presumably maybe get it otherwise. I'm not sure, but.
Again, just provide an additional buffer with the Horton Park and, I mean, just preserve and tree canopy where we could. I mean, it would, if we were going to access the lots to the south, we would have to tap into Glad Song. I mean, the lots would be larger estate lots, and we just felt like it was a better use as a resource conservation area.
Do you have enough, if you had just counted the, the intermittent stream buffers and maybe other wetlands, do you have enough RCA to achieve the, the goal without that?
We would not. We could have committed to the UDO minimum of 10% if, if we went that route. But no, this allowed us to exceed it to 25.
Okay.
Any other questions?
With the, so the remaining 150 feet, I understand that you don't want to be bound to an application that might not come through. Would you agree to a best effort there? So, if, you know, file for the application and if it comes through completely, the remaining 150 feet?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we will, we'll, we'll design it as part of the first phase and, you know, we will submit to the state. But, but again, we can't, I can't guarantee you that the state's going to approve, approve that.
Yeah, right.
I'm suggesting maybe if it happens, then something additional that's not in the application right now could be done.
Right. So, I'm, I'm asking, so that, because what you just said is not covered in the application, I don't think.
That's correct. We've only committed to the building of the 150 feet.
So, I, I guess my, my ask is, like, would you be willing to up your commitment there slightly, right? So, if that application is successful, that you would complete the remaining 150 feet to connect the greenway to the south side?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how that would, would work, but I don't know if you want to speak to that.
About 315, I think, roughly. I was measuring on the map.
Yeah, that would take a little bit of work to craft a zoning condition to make sure it's enforceable and to make sure all the steps are followed to where we don't, where staff isn't in a position where we can't approve a plan because something was out of order. So, that, that is, that is an appropriate ask, but we would ask that staff have time to work with the applicant to craft a condition if that is the will of the council.
How much time do you think you need for that?
I, I would request, would you all figure?
I mean, if we could, if we could phase it, I mean, we would commit to, like, by the last TCO would be held. last TCO would be held up by.
Application, yeah. We could likely, I don't know if you want to do that today, but we could likely get that at the next meeting, next town council meeting.
What's it?
I'll get directions.
Let's try tonight.
Okay, yeah. That's what I was saying.
So I guess we'd like for you to go on to the next item so that we can walk on this.
Can we do that?
I think another representative would like to speak.
Good with that. Y'all good with that?
Can another representative speak, please, real quick? Just a representative.
I apologize. Just, Councilman, I was just going to say, well, we will commit to a good faith effort, similar to what we've done on Apex Gateway with conservation tree replacement. If we can get a permitted, we're going to build it. We, it's an additive to our project to have connectivity on the greenway. So fully intend to do it, but to Gray's commentary, the permitting process is what it is in terms of pursuing the 401. So as long as we get a permitted, we would intend to build it and we'll use good faith efforts to do so. Just wanted you to hear that from us.
Okay.
Thank you, attorney.
I don't think the public hearing has been opened. Are we going to do that before you go on to the next?
Yes, we can do that.
That's all.
All right. Okay. All right. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate you. All right, we'll go ahead and open up public hearing for this item. And first speaker is Bill Jensen.
Okay, my name is Bill Jensen, 1005 South Wellensburg Place. And I'll try to be brief. I have no choice. I'm on the Environmental Advisory Board and this program came through. And what my problem is a bit, I don't know what items the developers, what items that we recommend that the developers deny doing. And I tried to listen tonight, and as you well know, my heartthrob is solar energy. And I didn't hear anything. I heard about the trees, but I didn't hear what the developer doesn't want to do. And I think that's critical. And we don't seem to get feedback about that either. So we're running kind of in the dark. We make our recommendations, go home happy, and don't hear about it again. So what I'm asking is that staff present the ones that are negative, the ones that the developer doesn't want to do. Now, on this one, I know we requested 2 kilowatts per thousand square feet of solar. And in a regular house, you typically get 6,000, or 6 kilowatts per thousand square feet. So we ask for a very minimum for the developer to add that. And the reason I look at solar as being important is because these guys, I know they're doing really good work environmentally, but they're still going to go in and they're going to tear down a whole bunch of trees. And that's a carbon dioxide heat sink that is going to go away. So the idea is to make the buildings as efficient as possible so that the environmental impact is not there. And I would hope tonight that the council might ask the developer if they are going to commit to 2 kilowatts per thousand square feet of heated area. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn Cuzzolino.
I want to clarify if it's six minutes because it's two public hearings. And I don't want to be silenced for three minutes. Thank you very much.
So to be clear, this timer will say six minutes. When this one runs out, it will restart another three minutes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. It does make sense, as long as I have six. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Dawn Cuzzolino, 3632 Bosco Road. So I just want to travel back in time because I want to give an example, because I heard the word affordable housing. So Ashburn rezoning, this was done previously. It was approved. And what was highlighted is that, it was interesting here because they actually put in their master plan, a donation, they did a fee in lieu for affordable housing, and you guys accepted that. You didn't want the physical affordable housing, so you accepted that. And actually, it was interesting. It was 5% of the total units of $218,000 per unit. It works out to roughly four units. It was rounded up and total was almost $900,000. So what's really interesting is, I hear affordability, but, you know, I think it's marketplace affordability, really. But I hear that word and you're happy to take a fund, money towards it. So I just want to mention that because I didn't really, these applications really don't go into the breadth of detail that they need to, but I wanted to point that out. Okay, so let's talk about Jesse Drive Industrial. What troubles me here is that this area is already identified as a 100-year floodplain and a 500-year floodplain. And while some will on social media designate that as rare, let's be practical. If you have a 30-year mortgage, whether it's commercial, whether it's residential, property on a 100-year floodplain has roughly a 26% chance of flooding at least once. And that risk is still non-negotiable in a 500-year floodplain. This applies not only to homes, but also to any commercial development. So you've got risk here of the cost of flooding ultimately will fall on the businesses, the lenders, and the taxpayers. So why are we inviting industry and medium density residential development into a floodplain? Can I talk about briefly Olive Chapel Road? Okay, that collapse and sinkhole? Because it happens up north. Actually, in New Jersey, they had a sinkhole. They thought it was, you know, something else, and they found out it was the construction. So that's a very expensive cost to collapse the road and the delays and all the safety issues, of course, that it entails. So, you know, what that means is basically the public's held paying for the cleanup, the infrastructure repairs, and the emergency response of our great EMT first responders having to deal with this instead of actual other emergencies. So let's, let's talk about the easements in fairness. Were easements or partial takings were only for 40 or so, the Wake County properties that were affected on Jesse Drive for the extension project? Are there any additional takings planned for Wake County people and their property? Is this 51-plus acre industrial property being bypassed from any right of way, any eminent domain? I thought I saw something in there, but, you know, you never know because it's not like the final laminated copy. And what about Horton Park? Did it receive the same generous treatment? This is not a new pattern. Back on July 15th, 2020, I'll take it back in time, the town held a public meeting on Jesse Drive Extension Phase One. The survey questions were predetermined to favor the town's desired design, asking if the design was very good, not good, needs some work. Residents raised serious concerns, traffic, mediums, flooding, school impacts, emergency access, and property takings. Yet options like scaling back to two lanes or reconsidering median placement were dismissed as not consistent with long-term goals. I think the traffic transportation map was brought out, or one of those land use maps. The outcome was already written. Community engagement was performative and not genuine. Now, this rezoning app continues that pattern. And it's interesting because it claims that, you know, the industrial portion, they didn't talk about it, is 44.39 acres. The full application includes as well that medium density for 7.42 acres. The planner and developer failed to submit a Wake County Public Schools Form for the residential portion, leaving the public without a clear picture. If you go to page 316, it even shows a blank form captioned "No Residential Uses." That may technically apply to the industrial portion, right? But it misleads the public because the full proposal clearly includes both the industrial and the residential development. And this lack of transparency is striking. And we've seen this with the widening. We've seen this with many, many other projects. And again, I'm going on record to show this clear pattern of limited transparency, incomplete submissions, prioritizing development over community, clearly. We really do deserve honest, honesty, accountability, and a complete application, not talking about it amongst yourselves on the spot, but actually reviewing it ahead of time and going through it and finding the holes and fixing it before you get to this forum. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking tonight. That is the last speaker for public hearings close. Is the recommendation to?
Staff recommends postponing the vote until after unfinished business number two, I believe, which is the Ashburn Pud that has not been approved.
All right, because when I'm here, you're going to need a lot of time.
I don't believe we're going to need as much time as I anticipated.
All right, but the reason I'm asking is because I want to go to recess for bio break if we can, because I'm, before we go to the next item.
Can we just go and do it after the new business, the very last thing, instead? So it's extra time. I find the bio break, but just the maximum amount of time would be after the new business one.
Can we just take a 10 to 15 minute recess, see where they're at?
That's fine. Yeah, we can take a recess and see where we're at when we get back from the recess.
All right, we're recess till 8:40. Enough time, 10 minutes?
Yeah. Yeah.
How much time do we have?
But, sir, not having the actual form, they can read it out and we can get the form signed tomorrow.
Right. All right, we're back in session. Mr. Killian? Looks like we reached a decision.
All righty, so the zoning condition that was in question was zoning, was transportation zoning condition number one. The developer has agreed to the following wording. Developers shall apply for all necessary state permits to allow for the construction of the public greenway across the subject property to connect to the existing public greenway near Gladstone Drive. If the state permits are approved, the development shall construct and dedicate the greenway through the entirety of the subject property. If the state permits are not approved, the development shall construct and dedicate the greenway through the light industrial conditional zoning acreage and terminate the greenway within 150 linear feet of the medium density conditional zoning, zoning boundary. And the development shall dedicate a greenway easement through the medium density conditional zoning acreage.
There's no time trigger on that. Is that okay? I mean, I don't know how long these applications take versus how long these things take. This development, I assume, takes years to build. I don't know how long the permits. If they take decades, hopefully it's not that long, then it may be too far behind the construction of the development.
Typically with these types of conditions, it happens with site plan. So when they come through for site plan, they'll have to demonstrate that they've gone through each step to get their official final certificate of occupancy. That's typically when we wait for all the installations to have been complete for the town to be able to accept them.
Okay.
So from, between now and the certificate of occupancies, at some point, they will be required to go through the process.
Okay. And I didn't hear federal. Are there not federal permits too? Is it just state? I think I've heard federal before, that's why.
Our strong water folks aren't here. I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. It's just state because of the kind of waterway it is? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Killian.
Appreciate that update.
All right, back for discussion? And a possible motion?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion, Killers, work.
As amended.
As amended with the, yes, and, sorry. The annexation, rezoning, and the amended zoning conditions.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second.
I have some comments I wanted to add. I appreciate the motion. So a couple of notes that I made. First, I do want to bring up the EAB process. I concur roughly with what the speaker said earlier. My hope with the EAB is that there's some feedback there directly about the proposal. And I've heard before that the EAB is not getting the feedback from the project, and that's more processing for us. I think I've brought this up before. Like, my hope, my preferred situation is the EAB actually would vote for approval of a project or not based on the accepted or denied conditions as a whole that they offered. And that's not how it works today. And so to throw that out there, I do wish that there was a process for the EAB to get that feedback into it. I would like to ask the applicant about the solar condition that wasn't included in the application. I'd prefer to see the commitment that was, I was recommended by the EAB. My final comment has to do with downzoning and the legal framework that we find ourselves in. My colleagues, remember, I brought this up before. This hasn't been fixed yet at the state level. We're still in a situation where, where development regulations are considered downzonings, and only downzoning has to get the signature of every property owner. Excuse me if I get the deal slightly wrong, but they have to get the signature of all the property owners in town that are potentially impacted by a downzoning. It's a very bad law. And we were hoping for a fix this session. One didn't happen. We're hoping for fixing the budget. We have no budget. We don't know when we're gonna get a budget. So we're still in a situation where, as we approve commercial developments and light industrial developments, what we're doing is we're giving the applicants, the property owners, a veto power over any future development regulations, in my interpretation, on all of the uses that elicit in their application. And this is something that I've complained about before, and I think the solution is to have, well, first of all, fix the law, but saving that, having much tighter commercial applications, which don't have the long list of usage, and which we consider more deeply potential UDO amendments we might want to put forward as part of the application or before the application for any problematic uses. Because as it stands today, if it's approved, when they have, you know, any of those uses, if we want to add a development regulation for one of them, we basically can't do it going forward without someone signing off. It's a state problem. It's still bugging me, and I think it's, I think it's a problem here.
Would you like a response, or?
Sure. Yeah, that was my rant. So, yeah, if there's a response or anything that was inaccurate, please let me know.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that in the use conditions on page five of seven of the written staff report and page six, staff did attempt to kind of create some of those more limiting structures in conjunction with the applicant to help ensure that while we may not be able to specifically downzone across town, that this specific site and the specific development would have to meet certain parameters that are not applied townwide. So just to...
What page, what language?
I believe it's page six and seven of the written staff report. I don't have the full, you know, thousand pages of the...
So, I mean, some uses were limited for part of the property. Is that what you're referring to?
No, sir. I'm saying, so for instance, use number five, before we get to the EAB section, says the used vehicle sales and rental shall conform to the following conditions. So that was one of those attempts to further limit.
I see. Thank you. So in the use conditions, you've added some extra conditions?
Yes, sir.
An attempt to address that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. I'll still point out, on the list of uses, it's still, there's what? Fifty-five? You know, there's a lot of stuff there that we would, as it stands today, have difficulty altering with further UDO amendments.
With the solar, did you want to ask the applicant, by the way?
I did, yeah. Do you guys have a response?
Yeah, Councilman Mahafee, just with respect to the solar, we do have solar across our portfolio. The issue here is this is a speculative development project. And a number of the tenants, that is a threshold issue for them, just as they evaluate their build outs, the implications on roof warranties, roof maintenance. So it's something that we have explored with tenants. But again, just being candid, a number of the businesses, for example, that have located to the Apex Gateway project, just have threshold issues with it, both in terms of the implications on R and M, but also there's been implications with fire safety and so forth. And so we're, we have it in our portfolio. We'd like to see more of it. But we're not comfortable making that commitment because we don't have an identified user that has agreed to, you know, to having it on their building. So.
And I do want to add, there is a lot I like about the project and about the conditions. You know, my rant notwithstanding, I do like that the RCA is 25 percent. That's amazing. I like the fact that we're getting a greenway. I like the fact that Jesse Drive, a major collector that we're building part of, is being sent in here. Those are all great things. So. I'll acknowledge that.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. More discussion, or you already vote? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Four one. Thank you all so much. All right, rezoning case, Veridia expansion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This rezoning is located within the Veridia development in the southern part of our jurisdiction. It's approximately one and a half acres, located on the west side of East Williams Street. As you can see, it's surrounded on three sides by the existing Veridia development. In addition, this parcel is already within the Veridia SD zoning. The applicant is requesting to rezone these parcels from residential agricultural to sustainable development conditional zoning. The rezoning is consistent with the 2045 land use map, which designates these properties as regional mixed use. The applicant held their required neighborhood meetings on April 21st and August 13th. And you have those meeting reports. A letter of impact from Wake County Public Schools was not requested for the rezoning as the applicant indicated that no additional residential units are proposed as part of adding these properties. To remind you, you've seen a couple of these expansion rezonings for Veridia before, but just to remind you, the UDO states that additional parcels of any size may be added to the sustainable development conditional zoning if they're located within 2,000 feet. And if approved, the parcels basically take on all the existing zoning conditions within the SD plan, and the development is allowed to increase, the development densities are allowed to increase on a pro-rata basis. Like I said, the applicant has indicated that they do not wish for the residential allocation to increase with this expansion. If approved, the Veridia SD plan, environmental enhancement plan, and the pattern book will all be applicable to the subject properties, which is why no additional zoning conditions have been offered. The rezoning was exempt from meeting with the EAB as it was, as it is less than 10 acres in size. Planning staff recommends approval of the rezoning as proposed, and the planning board unanimously recommended approval at their September meeting. The rezoning is consistent with the 2045 land use map and is reasonable and in the public interest because it will encourage more efficient and compatible development of the property and provide for the same development standards as applicable to the rest of Veridia. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
My only question is about the piece of property right behind this, just making sure that they're gonna continue to have access to their property that's not a part of the SD.
Right. Yes, we will ensure, in fact, I've seen some plans working on this, and there will be, there will be a stub access provided. This area here is a future street within Veridia, so they will have frontage, should, yeah. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Here and now, thank you so much. All right, we'll open up public hearing for this item. No one signed up to speak. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Motion, yeah.
Second.
Who was the second? Killers work. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Efficient Business, one. Ms. Cox, how are you?
Okay, so this is an unfinished business item. These are transportation plan amendments. They're associated with the next item on your agenda, rezoning case 24 CZ10 Ashburn PUD. You did hear this item on August 12th, and a public hearing was held. Just a brief recap of the transportation plan amendments. They involve the proposed realignment of a minor collector street that's on our adopted plan, following Mount Zion Church Road and Hammock Beach Trail. The addition of a roundabout at the intersection of those two roads, and then switching the location of the side path proposed along Hammock Beach Trail. The main purpose of these amendments are to minimize impacts on adjacent neighborhoods and contain the impacts within the area proposed to be rezoned. The planning board did unanimously recommend approval of the amendments at their July 14th, 2025 meeting. Staff also recommend approval of the amendments. And just to clarify, we would recommend approval of these amendments with or without the rezoning. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Cox? Here and now, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to you. Efficient Business, two, Mr. Killian?
Would you all like a full presentation or just an update?
No, no.
Just any changes.
Just wanted to be clear. Just wanted to be clear. The only change to the proposed rezoning is an offer of affordable housing donation. The condition in the planning and development read as follows. Prior to recording the first master subdivision final plat, the developer shall make a donation to the town of Apex Affordable Housing Fund in the amount equal to 5% of the total unit, number of units, at a rate of $218,000 per unit. If 5% of the total units calculation results in a fraction between 0.50 and 0.99, the total units shall be rounded up to the nearest whole number. If the 5% of total units calculation results in a fraction between 0.01 and 0.49, the units shall be rounded down to the nearest whole number.
Thank you. Any questions? All right.
I do have a question. So our current policy asks for 10%. I believe the 5% is predicated on the time of submission. Is that correct? Like, the applicant wants to keep the 5% because that was what was in effect when the application was first submitted? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, Marla Newman. That is correct. When you asked the applicant to speak with housing staff, we shared with the applicant that the policy in place today does allow for 10% as opposed to the previous policy of 5%. that the policy in place today does allow for 10% as opposed to the previous policy of 5%. So we walked through that process and let the applicant know that at 10%, that would require seven housing units as opposed to the four, which would have been covered under the previous policy. The conversation did in, in fact, uh, also include a, a discussion about a potential fee in lieu, which at that time, we explet, expressed that, again, under the new policy, the fee in lieu would still be calculated on 10% of, um, the number of units. So you multiply that 10% and I think we came up with a total of, of 1.526 million dollars under the new policy. The old policy, it would have been, um, $872,000. Uh, as I explained, that, uh, for me, in discharging my responsibilities, I had to share what the existing policy is at the time the applicant came to staff. And so that is what I shared was our position as staff, but that ultimately I would have to defer to council in your wisdom to determine which policy would apply.
Any questions? Thank you.
Uh, just one question, Ms. Newman. So they, the, the applicant is aware of the, the, the 1.5 million dollar figure?
Correct. That is correct. I provided calculations, uh, under both scenarios for both units as well as for fee in lieu. But our, our preference is always the units, but if the fee in lieu was an option, then th- this is what the calculation would be.
And you also, um, had a discussion related to the incentives possible as well?
That is correct. I shared that, uh, in June, when you updated the, uh, incentive zoning policy, you also, uh, in a separate matter, uh, approved a pilot program that would allow us to do an investment of up to $40,000 a door, uh, for a maximum of 10 units. And so if you recall, you all approved the pilot program for $400,000. I shared that that was also something that was available and that we had other incentives in the policy that was revised in June. And, uh, at that point, I did not hear anything about being interested in, uh, accessing any of the other incentives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant is here, if you would like to hear from them as well.
Please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Tommy Craven. I'm with Priest Craven and Associates. We're land use consultants, and we're working for the Ashburn Development Group. The logic was pretty clear, uh, when we filed this, uh, this rezoning and PUD request. The 5% policy was in place. We feel that that's the appropriate, um, recommendation for this project. And we feel that the fee in lieu approach can get those homes constructed quicker, uh, through the town and its connections with nonprofits than it, than it could if they wait for us to go through our full entitlement and land development process prior to recording a plat. So we're pleased with the, with the recommendation. We're pleased with the planning board unanimous, uh, recommendation for approval. We're pleased with the staff approval, and we hope that you will accept this, uh, affordable housing condition and approve this development this evening. Be glad to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Any questions for Mr. Craven? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, discussion time.
Motion approved with the updated condition.
All right, we have a motion, updated condition. Is there a second?
Is that for both, uh, both items? There's two items that are together.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yes, and the transportation plan amendments. Thank you.
Can we, uh, can we split the votes and vote on the transportation plan adjustment first?
Yes.
All right. Draw that one, okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the transportation plan adjustment.
Motion, transportation plan.
I'll second that.
Second Kill's worth. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Rezoning.
Go ahead.
Motion approve the rezoning with the updated condition.
Motion to approve, yeah. Discussion.
I have a discussion point, and I just want to kind of share my thoughts on fee in lieu because I think fee in lieu is best utilized when there is an option for affordable housing that doesn't really equate to affordable housing. And, and allow me just to kind of explain. In some of our more, uh, outlying components of the town, a number of the residents that are being, and units that are being built there are 1 million, 1.2. And if you have that sort of pricing, 80% AMI still doesn't make a house affordable. So to me, when you have that sort of setup, it's great to get the fee in lieu so that we can best utilize those funds in order to make affordable housing in a place where housing is affordable. To me, this is one of those locations that would be best suited for actually identifying the actual units as opposed to the fee in lieu because of what's location, its relationship with the other neighboring, uh, neighborhoods, and, um, the, the transportation aspect. So in my eyes, to me, this is much more aligned in the idea of meeting our affordable housing plan in terms of units as opposed to our affordable housing plan in terms of fee in lieu. That would be my preference in a case like this. Um, and I do appreciate the, the applicant, um, coming back and, and having the conversation about this because I do think that's an important conversation to have. And, uh, you know, I think my philosophy on this doesn't have to reach the issue as to whether the 5% or the 10% fee in lieu is appropriate because I don't think the fee in lieu is appropriate in this case. That's just my thoughts on it.
Can I clarify? You're, you're referring to the townhome section, not the single family home section north of?
Townhome section.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, um, I agree with that. I mean, I, I, every time we, we talk about, you know, um, affordable units, it's, you know, in my mind, it is, we need built affordable units. We need houses on the ground that people can have access to. And, um, you know, I agree that there's, there are certain times when the fee in lieu is definitely where we want to go. I'm not, I don't believe this is one of them, so.
I'm with them.
I have nothing further to contribute.
So.
Who wants to speak?
If you'll indulge me, um, can we modify this condition to go to the 10% threshold, but retain the fee in lieu option? And, uh, it's a substantial increase in the financial side of it. Uh, I appreciate your comments on the fee in lieu. But I think that, uh, I think there's a great deal of affordable housing that can take place quicker under a fee in lieu scenario here, particularly at the 10% threshold, than we would be able to provide. And, uh, the developer is prepared to make that commitment and revise this condition accordingly. If you vote on this tonight and pass that condition, it will be contingent on revising the, uh, condition that's currently in the PUD to call for a 10% threshold.
Okay, so what else would change in this condition? So we've got the five that would go to 10.
The five goes to 10.
That would be the only necessary change, is any reference to 5%, 10%? The, um, rate is the same rate regardless.
Can we get out here for Ms. Newman and make sure that's good?
Yes, but I think the rate itself stays the same.
Yes, sir. Are we comfortable with the 10% fee in lieu? We would accept it. We prefer the units, of course, but we would accept the, the 10% fee in lieu if that is the council's will. I understand your point, Mayor Pro Tim, absolutely. Uh, and like I said, I, I would always prefer the unit. However, uh, I also see that, uh, in this instance, we have a decision to make, you know?
Here's, here's where I'm struggling. And I, I really appreciate the increased condition that's being offered here. You know, a million and a half investment into our affordable housing fund is nothing to sneeze at, right? So it is a material ask from the developer. But I want to go back to, we need units on the ground, right? And so if we put this money in our housing fund, by the time that we acquire land and go through the planning and building of these units, right? Um, I think we're looking at a wrong timeline that is counter to what we're trying to achieve. I'm also a little bit worried about the precedent that we're setting here that, you know, basically by paying a fee, we allow developers to meet their affordable housing commitments irrespective of the developments that is being put down. And so although I, I really, you know, like the 10%, I think we're kind of missing the point of what we're trying to achieve.
Now, I would, I would, I'd be, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just want to make sure I, I'm hearing correctly. So the reason we're possibly considering this is because it was submitted prior to the policy change, right? Is that what we're doing?
No. So we have the current policy in effect, which is 10%, which was put in place in June. And prior to the change in the policy, uh, the previous policy was made known, and there was, uh, a, a decision not to offer anything under the previous policy. So when it came to you all in August, it was said to, for the applicant to come back and talk with staff to make an affordable housing proffer. And so, of course, now we have the new policy, and so then that's when I gave the parameters that based on the size of the development, uh, under the new policy, it would either be seven units, which is where we started, was talking about actual units, and then the conversation shifted to what if we offered a fee in lieu rather than the seven units? So then that's how we arrived at the, the dollar amount that the staff had offered, uh, as, uh, one alternative.
Thank you for that clarity. Mr. Craven, did you need to present something else or?
The only thing that I would add, uh, to that discussion is that we did submit at the time when the policy was 5%. And typically, in most of your, uh, most of your subdivision and UDO regulations, that, the submission date is what applies, and when you come in at that point in time, you're, you're locked in to the UDO requirements at that point in time. And, and if they change, typically that doesn't affect your proposal, your submittal. So I, I do believe we were subject to the 5% option, and that's what started, that's what brought the, uh, the commitment. And now, again, we're offering to go to 10. And, uh, if, if that's insufficient, then I guess I would ask that you hold this at the table for another month for us to give, uh, give us some time to consider the alternatives.
Um, one of the things that, um, I would suggest moving this forward, and I'm, I'm willing to make that motion to set it out another month, is to consider talking with our affordable housing group about, uh, staff members about the incentive policies here because the town can offer things that can potentially help offset the cost as well. So it would be something, it would be worth having that conversation, um, because this, this may bring down the price point for building these. So I would consider that, um, and, you know, our, um, desire in the town to meet the need of providing built affordable housing, so actual units being built, um, is something to discuss with our staff as well, so.
We will.
I, I understand the, uh, discussion around what was in effect and how that's treated under the UDO. Uh, as it turns out, though, this is not a part of the UDO. So that's what makes this situation a little unique, is this is not a part of the UDO. So I have to abide by whatever the policy is in effect at the time I negotiate with the developers. So I wanted to clarify that the UDO doesn't apply in this particular instance to this policy.
And I appreciate that, Ms. Newman, because I do, and I, I appreciate the arguments of the, of the applicant because I do think that as we are outside of the UDO process, it would come to us as to whether or not. And I do think there's a, a good faith argument that grandfathering in because of the time of the application is, I think that's a solid argument. I, I do. I think that's worthy of consideration. I'm still sitting in the same spot with regard to the location, and that location to me is much more driven towards units rather than fee in lieu. Certainly not making a decision as to whether or not 5% or 10% I fully recognize and can appreciate and, you know, very grateful for the idea of the 10% movement. But I think in a larger context, uh, just from my perspective, I, my colleagues have their own thought processes on this. To me, this seems like the scenario where units are more preferable to fee in lieu. If this were in another location, I think the balance of that equation changes differently. So I just wanted to, to, to kind of give a little bit of a highlight as to my thought process on this.
Absolutely.
So it sounded like, did you have something to say?
Uh, no, I was going to say, like, we have a motion that was not seconded, so.
Yeah, it sounded like his wills have still worked together, so the original motion can get, didn't get a second, so. Councilwoman Kill's worth.
I'm waiting for a date.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to defer this to October 28th, um, that council meeting.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, Business One.
Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of town council. I'm Katie Schwing. I'm here to present tonight on the Apex Transit prioritization study. Sorry, okay, that's maybe too loud. Um, just a quick project overview. So this is a study to identify and develop priorities for local public, public transit improvements and expansion in town over the next approximately five years. The primary outcome of the study is to develop that list of prioritized recommendations, uh, to be accepted by town council. And a secondary outcome is the implementation plan for accomplishing those recommendations. I did give a brief overview to you in June, um, so I'm not going to repeat most of what I already presented to you. So this will focus more on the final list of recommendations. I did want to point out that the study documents are available on the town's project webpage, which is publicinput.com/TransitStudy. Um, and that includes the study document, final draft, as well as for appendices, which kind of outline all the, all the work that was done to date. Um, I did want to point out, it was alerted to us that there is an error in the document. So Figure 10 on page 19 of the study document is our old version of the Apex, uh, context areas from our comprehensive plan. It was just the wrong file that was added, and we will, uh, make sure to replace it with the most updated version for the final copy.
And to clarify, Ms. Schwing, this, the, the route in that area was related to the Pleasant Park being there, not necessarily what the cu, the exact context area in that area was, right?
Exactly. So that illustration of our context area maps, it doesn't substantially change the study. It was just the wrong file. So, um, yeah, it doesn't change the outcome of the study, and, and the study doesn't change the map either. And, and the study doesn't change the map either. So it was for illustration. So continuing those important notes, so this, this is a study document. So it also does not change the town's transit plan map in our comprehensive plan. Pending study acceptance of the recommendations, we would need to come back, or staff would need to come back to Town Council to present amendments to the transit plan map and have those go through a public hearing and approval process. So this does not supersede that map at this time. I also did want to point out that implementation of the study recommendations is also subject to the town budget process and the CIP development process. And it is also subject to possible grant awards that we could get. So some of these recommendations are eligible for possible grant funding, but we can't guarantee that we'll get that grant funding, which could affect the timeline. So I'll go right into the final staff recommendations. They've been changed a little bit since the draft recommendations were presented in June. And that is due to the public comment period that we held over the summer. We received a lot of thoughtful comments and so refined the recommendations based on the comments we received. So there's two sets of recommendations. The first set, there's four items in there and they all relate to possible fixed route transit improvements and expansion. And Set Two is other recommendations, which are basically other things, other projects that the town could do to improve transit access or, or service quality. The first for the fixed route service recommendations, I'll, I'll use this map to go through them, but I just wanted to orient folks to the map first. So the, the smaller map on the left is sort of our baseline scenario for FY27 of what transit service is, is already programmed to, to be here in town. So it includes Go Apex Route One, as well as the three regional routes that are programmed to come to our area. And that's if, if none of the recommendations are implemented in the study. The right side of the screen shows those routes plus our fixed route recommendations. And those are the purple lines that I'll go through. So the first of the four fixed route recommendations is actually not visible on this map right now, but it's to implement Go Apex Route One expansion improvements already recommended for funding from FY25 and FY26 that we're still working through the implementation of. And that includes increased frequency Monday through Saturday from hourly to half hour service. The addition of Sunday service, which we don't currently offer, as well as continuing bus stop improvements. And so we've already received funding approval for those things, but we're still working through implementation. And so the proposed implementation schedule is really this year and next year for those. Recommendation Two is to make tweaks to the actual routing of Go Apex Route One. And this bumped up in priority from the draft. And that includes access to Town Hall and Downtown in both routing directions, such that basically there's nowhere on the route that's more than about 15 minutes away from Downtown, which responds to public comment, as well as providing access along Chapel Ridge Road to the new apartments and townhomes that are being built along there, as well as some potential tweaks down by Broadstone Stationway and Hughes Street to serve the Walmart and shopping area better. And we're, we're thinking about potential start of service for this in FY28 just because there are a few bus stop tweaks that we'd have to make and those just take time to get through the development process. The one down at Broadstone Station could potentially take longer depending on capital project needs that we might try to pursue for that. Okay, recommendation number three is to implement a new fixed route, which we called the Pine Plaza Pleasant Park Route, that would have the same service characteristics as Go Apex Route One. And we would be looking to implement the actual start of service around FY29 to allow us to build new bus stops and go through the whole, you know, grant funding process and, and development process. The last fixed route service expansion recommendation is to provide a fixed route service to the Veridia East Village area timed with the Western Wake Tech campus and Mix U Center Development, which we're now thinking will be around FY30. And all those new service recommendations also include an expanded Go Apex door-to-door service area, which is our federally required paratransit service.
Can I ask you about that one? I noticed that the gray area, like, cuts through neighborhoods. Is that half mile, quarter mile?
Three-quarter.
Quarter. Is that, is that like law? Because it seems like it'd be nice if we could include, if it touches a neighborhood, include that whole neighborhood in the, in the zone.
So the, the law, or it's, it's ADA, it's federal register. So it's clarification of the law that extends it to three-quarters of a mile boundary. You, you can expand service beyond three-quarter of a mile boundary, but you have to be careful when you're working with certain funding sources to identify which trips are counted as the required versus the non-required. So it just requires a little more coordination and work to, to determine what those service areas are.
Okay.
But it can be done.
Okay.
Is the expectation too that as this goes out to Wake Tech, it would also include NC Children's?
No, it doesn't.
Right.
There's plans, right?
So we became aware of that project after we developed the draft recommendations. And due to the timing of everything, we didn't go back and identify additional recommendations to serve the Children's Hospital, which is too far away from this route to be considered served by that route. We also determined that the proposed build-out date for the hospital is beyond the five years or so that we had for the study. It doesn't mean we're not going to continue looking at this area for potential transit service in the future as a, you know, large employer that would make sense. But it's not included in these recommendations.
For what it's worth, I've, in my comments to the wait transit plan, they have a fixed route run by Go Triangle that goes from the NC Children's Hospital area, I'm not sure exactly if it's that, up to the RTP hub. And my comments were, it'd be awfully nice if that maybe shifted where you maybe start at the hospital, but then you go to the RDU hub that they're talking about in papers, you may have seen some pictures of. And to get people from the airport to the hospital and through downtown Apex and beyond. So I think, I, I think there's, maybe there's other transit options that we can do besides that. But I think getting it from the hospital to the airport maybe is even more important than our local routes personally. Because of the number of kids that are going to be coming from the hospital, from, from the airport, out of town families.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also thinking about, you know, the people that work there and stuff like that as well.
Oh, yeah.
Making it a little more convenient.
If there's at least one stop in Apex home where we could connect to a local route, that'd be, that'd be good.
Presumably that route I'm describing that may or may not be part of the updated plan would go from the hospital area to the mobility hub and then up through Davis Drive or somewhere and then up through the RDU. The RDU thing is kind of a, in theory, thing too right now, so. But anyway, yeah, but I think the wait transit plan is where I'm pushing harder on getting that because that's not been released yet and I'm not sure they're going to be able to have time to put it on there or not, but that was my comment.
Yeah, so just for a quick clarification, the plan that Mr. Gant's referring to is the countywide transit plan. And it proposes many additional routes over a 10-year planning period. And so it would require further planning through that program to determine where exactly the routing would go and what year it would be funded.
Yeah. And they update it every five years, is my understanding. So five years, we'll know a lot more about timing, I think, of the, of the hospital.
So those are the fixed route service recommendations for the study. And then I'll-
Sorry, and to clarify, I asked you the minute that hospital's announced, you've tried to map out that purple route, dark purple route, to reach the hospital, but it doesn't have the, it's a little bit too long of a time period to get the 30-minute route. Is that correct?
Correct.
That we're trying to maximize the buses being in the same spot at the same time to, for transfers.
Yeah, I mean, my, my main thought on this is 55 is already a madhouse. So the more we can, you know, combine, get people on a bus to head out that way, especially to Wake Tech and the NC Children's and anything like that, the less traffic we'll actually have on the road, which can be helpful.
Okay, not to solve it on the spot here, but we might be better off going down Veridia Parkway instead of 55 with the bus. Because we already have a bus stop on Veridia Parkway or Tension Road, like before it turns into Veridia Parkway.
Yeah, and just to illustrate that, we, we do on our transit plan map show potential future local route unidentified, basically going down Veridia Parkway to Jesse Drive, which is not completed yet, but.
Thank you. Yeah, I did not expect we were going to solve it tonight. I just wanted to make my comments known about future plans.
Okay, so there's six other recommendations. These are the other projects that would support transit service in town. Recommendation One is to support Phase One of the proposed Downtown Mobility Hub, which you all received a study on this spring, which would provide a bus transfer area in Downtown. And this is subject to, to getting funding for us completing that. And at this point, we're thinking we can plan to try to start construction around the end of this study period, so about FY30, but it would require design and engineering work ahead of that. The recommendation number two is to evaluate land use policies for transit supportive development as part of our Peak Plan 2055 comprehensive plan update, which just kicked off this summer and is expected to take about 18 months to complete. So it's getting started now and we'll work through that over this year and into the next fiscal year. Another recommendation is to explore options to serve seniors and those with disabilities outside the federally required Go Apex door-to-door service area. So that, that refers to the question you asked earlier. And we feel like it would require more of a study to evaluate the different options and funding sources and service models that we could pursue. And it does require a lot of work to determine what possible costs are because demand response services are not as easy to estimate when you, when you introduce service to a new area. And so we're proposing to conduct a study about it before, you know, bringing forward recommendations for implementation. So targeting a study in FY28 to implement around FY30. And this doesn't include any required service area increases with the new fixed route service. And then number four was to continue to support improved pedestrian and bicycle connections to transit. This was one thing we heard loud and clear from the public comment period this summer. And so we actually bumped it up a little bit in priority. But we would consider this ongoing as, as we have been working as much as possible to coordinate, you know, sidewalk and, and bike ped projects with potential bus stops and transit service. Recommendation Five is to investigate transit signal prioritization, which is basically a hardware and software system that will allow buses to communicate to the traffic signals in town to actually help keep the buses running on time and minimize, to the extent we decide is practical, the amount of time they wait at red lights. And this, again, would require coordination with our TID department as well as NC DOT. So we would recommend conducting a study about it before implementation.
So this might be an opportunity for people to look forward to being behind a bus.
Right. It's, it's, it's not necessarily going to speed things up a ton, but it kind of puts a bus almost on a more even playing field because transit vehicles do tend to operate a little slower than a private vehicle just because of the size of the vehicle and the having to stop at bus stops and things like that. So it's not going to be like a, a fire engine where it automatically just turn all the lights green, but it could help make it easier for the bus to keep on this route. And then recommendation number six is to explore options to serve others. Others meaning in addition to those with disabilities or seniors outside our fixed route service area. And what we're thinking as far as implementation goes on that one is actually to combine this recommendation with the proposed study to expand options to seniors and those with disabilities to see if we can find some efficiencies that would just allow more options for everyone and not necessarily only seniors and those with disabilities. So we think that, you know, could be wrapped into the same study. And those are all the recommendations that we're putting forward as our final list. And I'm, got a possible motion, and I think you provided a possible updated motion that includes that updated Figure 10. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I like the plan. I, you know, I'm a big fan of public transit, right? When done well, it can make a really big difference. My main concern is about the timing of some of these initiatives that feels a little bit slow, right? And so I understand there's a budget component to this and a capital investment component to this. But for example, the, the Lake Pine Pleasant Park Route, you know, that is currently, you know, three years out, right, from where we are today. That's, that feels like a long time to me. So my ask would be is that upon, you know, approval of this plan, we continue to look for ways to accelerate, even, you know, put an, put an ask in front of us as part of the budget cycle, right? And, you know, we'll have to prioritize it at that point, right? And, you know, then the decision is up to us ultimately, so. So with that, you want to make a motion? Brad, you want to make a motion? This is really your, your thing, right?
Are we done discussing? I'll make a motion to accept the study with the amendment to Figure 10 context map.
There's a motion?
Second, though.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, carries. Thank you so much, Ms. Schwing. Great job. All right, that's the last item, right? We are adjourned. Have a good night.